And county, more of county commissioners to audit this time and we do have quorum. I don't know if we need to acknowledge that for this retreat or not, but first thing on the agenda would be discussion, adjustment, or approval of the agenda as presented. Motion or comments?
Move to approve the agenda.
For, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carried. And item number one is getting started. Manager Kathy, what was yours?
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our annual budget retreat. We have a full agenda this morning and look forward to hearing from Amy and Russell with some mid-year updates. I will do a preview for you of the upcoming fiscal year. We'll have some opportunities to discuss priorities, goal setting, strategic planning as we move forward. We'll also have Carrie Currie joining us from the museum. We have a couple of mid-year requests that we will discuss. And then we have our debt consultants, who will be joining us later this morning. We do have a break scheduled at ten thirty, and we do have snacks, both some food and beverages in the back of the room, so please feel free to grab some of those anytime we'd like this morning. Do we have any questions before we get started about how we have laid out the day? Anything that you want to make sure that we have covered before we finish up our time together? Okay, then. Well, that sets the stage for the day. I did that quickly, so Russell, I guess I'm giving you a little extra time for your part. You have until nine twenty-five for the revenue preview reappraisal. Turn it over to you.
Okay, how powerful is this one? So I want to go over the changes in accounting value from this year to project for next year. You can see there is actually a little bit of growth. Most of our growth this time was in residential, which is an increase in subdivisions and, of course, new houses. So we start off twenty twenty-three with a budget of four point eight nine five billion. We actually came in at four point nine eight one, over by about eighty-six million or one point seven percent. Real property change from three five two five to an estimated three point six billion, about seventy-five billion dollar increase or two percent. My machinery and equipment always does a, goes down a little bit, then goes back up. And what happens there, machinery and equipment is valued every year. So if equipment gets older, it is worth less, and we usually lose about six percent annually on machinery. But then we get offset by some increases. We have some new equipment at Hollywood and some new equipment in U.S. Flu that took care of the offset of depreciation. State appraisals always interesting, I'm going to try to predict. With the coal plants predicted to close, you would think our number of state appraisals will be going down every year. For this year, we had the highest number we've ever had on state appraisals. That came in at nine hundred sixty-six million dollars. We had thought that would come in at nine, at nine thirty-five this year. Because we've been conservative on that, we don't get that number to September. It actually came in much higher. So we're going to take this year's number, adjust again, just down slightly. And I have a slide that shows why I want to do that. So we're going to book budget in nine twenty-six for all of the state appraisals, and coming in with just a little bit over a five billion dollar budget. And this does not include DMV, the motor vehicles that are paid through the tag office. We're estimating that at four hundred fifty million dollars, which is slightly up to four hundred twenty-five million for the current year. Have similar slides for the fire district. Of course, the fire district taxes everything that's not in the city. So a little bit different impact there, but not tremendously different. Again, we're seeing that we were about two percent over for this year, based on where we budgeted. And same thing with machinery and equipment, but the machinery actually did a little bit better in the fire district because it's some of the older equipment is located in the city. Again, we adjusted down with the state, state appraised stuff. DMV is going from three fifty up to three hundred eighty, so again, an increase in GMV expenses. GMV revenues. Changing state appraisals, this is the slide that kind of explains why I want to be conservative on your state appraisals. You can see the numbers are all over the place. I'll go back to seventeen. We did have a decrease in eighteen, a decrease in nineteen, and a decrease in twenty, and then it started going back up again. And in twenty-one, we had a huge increase. The explanation we received was there was some old equipment that was being replaced, and the old equipment and the new equipment, both were here, therefore, we had an increase. But that didn't really explain why it stayed up, and stayed up, and stayed up. I would anticipate with the plants closing one day soon, that this number will start going down, so we'll be conservative there. You set your budget late June, we find out this number in early September. This represents eighteen point four six percent of a budget for twenty-three. So it's kind of one of those things, we really can't budget for every dollar. So we've always been conservative here, and it's always protected us from a revenue shortfall. I'll put that on a graph, make it a little bit easier to see. So twenty twenty-four, the very end of the graph is where I want to budget for next year. And you can see, it's been all over the place. There's no way you can trend that out and figure out what's happening. One thing with state appraised properties, they're very strongly appraised based on the income approach, and it's always done based on the size of the pie that Person County holds. So if we have deep progress, for example, investing in other parts of the state, it could change our ratio. Our number could go down, not because our plants were less, but they're allocating more of the income to another location. And it really is impossible, the state doesn't even have their numbers until May first, to start even looking at it. So at this point, we're just taking a guess for the place over there. If we get closer to the option of budget, we can shore that number up. That's where I think we should start for now. So we always talk about what penny on the tax rate will generate. And where you have, in the last few years, the last few years, used a ninety-seven point five percent collection rate. It's important to keep that collection rate on the conservative side. You never know when you'll have a large bankruptcy, and your collection rate will not be met. And if you have a bad collection year, you're penalized for that year and the next year. You can't budget for more than you enjoy the previous year. So ninety-seven and a half is where we're quite likely to budget, let's make this as of past years. We will probably come in a little bit better than ninety-nine percent this year. And of course, remember, you always are shoring up your budget with fund balance, and that's where your fund balance comes from. When you budget conservative, you're protecting your current year, and you also have a way to put that money back in that you kind of balance the budget with. One penny on the tax rate last year was five nineteen, seven forty-one. So each penny is going to bring you fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-seven more for the county. That's the county tax rate of seventy-two cent. So that will give you roughly one million twenty-nine thousand dollars more in revenues from property taxes if you don't change the tax rate and don't change the collection rate. So a million dollars extra there. And same thing with the fire, at four fifty-eight. Of course, fire carries less value per penny, not taxing the city residents. And that's going to give you an extra ninety thousand dollars in fire tax. Any questions on revenues? I'd like to go into what I think will happen for our next reappraisal. And so why we just did a reappraisal on twenty-one? Well, by resolution, the county is a four-year county. So we are reappraising properties every four years. However, the last two reappraisals were eight years, and that's because the market was kind of stale. And if you look, this is state's sales ratio. Sales ratio is taking the, the value things are selling for, the price they're selling for, and comparing that to your appraisal value. And you need to be within ten percent. If you're below ninety percent or over a hundred and ten percent, it means you're, you're too far off. You need to do a reappraisal. Statewide, the whole state is off. Eighty-two point three nine percent is the overall sales ratio for the state. So everybody out there is eighteen percent on average value to low. And I've seen these numbers where we were five percent overvalued. So it's interesting to see that sales ratio statewide has changed that much in the last year. Also, if you're thinking about all these counties being a, a low sales ratio, it means finding a reappraisal firm is going to be harder to find and probably more expensive because you compete against all other counties. Everybody is probably in reappraisal mode at this point. There's lots of talk in the national market about the real estate market changing. I do think it's going to change. I think it's going to slow down. I think the prices are going to change quite a bit. It's going to come down. Will it come down soon enough for us to delay a reappraisal? A reappraisal takes about a year and a half to do. So my plan at this point would be to go ahead and get the RFP ready to issue, and come back to the board in May if it looks like we can delay. Now, the reason sales ratio is so important, your state appraised properties are praised annually. And if you're praising your real estate at twenty percent less, then that fourth year, which is our twenty-four year, if you're below ninety percent, the state appraisals should be treated fairly. So for the twenty-five year, they will get the same discount that you're giving them to every other property. I can show you how that works out with some numbers. This is statewide. This is where we were in twenty twenty-one. And so twenty twenty-one was a reappraisal year. So not surprisingly, January, a hundred percent. That's where we're required by law to be, a hundred point four nine. February dropped down a little bit, so things are selling a little bit higher. Then March, we're back at a hundred percent. But you see how quickly we jumped from a hundred percent, dropped down to eighty-one point seven three. And that is for the month, year of twenty twenty-one. We ended up with the average for the year, ninety-two point seven point. But then we go into twenty twenty-two. We start off January. Start off January with, lost my number, sorry.
It says ninety-seven point three six.
Yeah, ninety-seven. Okay, thank you. So we start off January at ninety-seven point three six, and we fluctuated back and forth. We end up with a ninety percent in December. So you see, it's kind of all over the place, with the worst part being in the summer, which is when your real estate is normally the hottest. I put all of that on one long graph, which makes it kind of hard to read. But it does show the difference in month to month. And this is a random study. So you're taking randomized deeds and commando sales prices. I always compare that to all sales that were qualified. And it's, the random sales is accurate. It is showing that our market is not that we had picked the best sales or the worst sales. So it does qualify that. Now, if this had been our twenty twenty-four year and we had not done a reappraisal, and our sales ratio for twenty twenty-two, or would have been twenty twenty-four, had come in at seventy-nine point seven one, is where we ended up. That would have meant a loss of state appraised properties of one point four million dollars. So we would have had to give the state appraised properties a little bit more than twenty percent off their taxes. That would cost us one point four million. And you would keep that same loss until you did a reappraisal or until the seventh year, and then you get remeasured again. So since this is twenty twenty-two, there's no harm, no foul. If this had been twenty-four, and this had been our, our market, one point four million dollars would have been lost for that year and the next year, until we were able to do another reappraisal. Keep in mind, it takes a year and a half to do a reappraisal, so you couldn't start one and have it on the books the next year. It may, it would probably hurt you for two years. And that same ratio, even if you, the market changed in twenty-five, and you were at ninety percent, you would still be penalized until you did another reappraisal at that same twenty percent off. Kind of scary. Another thing, as I said, in twenty twenty-one was ninety-two point seven one, sales ratio of twenty twenty-two was seventy-nine point seven one. January twenty-three started off better, at eighty-five percent, but it's February dropped, dropped the other way, so I really don't know. Reappraisal costs about seven hundred thousand also do. So you see why doing a reappraisal even at seven hundred thousand would be the correct thing to do if you're going to lose one point four million or more. Questions?
How much did you say, excuse me, how much did you say in the reappr, to do a reappraisal?
It's around seven hundred thousand, runs about seventeen dollars a parcel. And then we have other costs, like tomography, some flyovers, some other changes that to do, but it's about, about seven hundred thousand. And that money is already set aside. So we do have to set aside money annually to fund reappraisal. And since we were only a four-year cycle, we have already funded, so we, the money's already set aside. It's a year and a half with the hard work, and what we don't want to do is do a reappraisal when the market is quiet because you have no sales. And you don't want to do reappraisal when the market is changing because you can't predict what's going to happen next. That's kind of where we got caught in two thousand and nine. We had a, two thousand and five reappraisal. Had planned on one for two thousand and nine, the market bottomed out. We delayed one year, and then one year, and finally ended up at eight years, twenty thirteen. The problem with that, once we start to work, my staff has to do, do double data entry on the appraisal side until the next reappraisal starts. Next reappraisal is going to take effect. So for four years, staff had to do double work. And I, I really don't want to do that again. It was the right answer at the time, but it was so difficult to maintain two databases with the staff we have. That's a huge challenge there. So once we start one, if the market changes, I think we probably need to finish it. That's why I would like to come back to the board. If there is anything to, to look at in May and say that we're not going to do a reappraisal, if the markets are changing a whole lot, with interest rates up, affordability is way down. I run some numbers, and I just really don't know how people can afford the houses out there at six and seven percent interest. That raises your house price a thousand dollars a month. I don't know how people, that's entry level houses. I, I don't understand how they make it work, and they probably aren't. Probably going to be able to, I'm not going to ask you shortly.
Russell, if you come back in May and want to proceed with that, what are timelines?
So I would, I already, we redid the RFP, for proposal for reappraisal. We went there pretty extensively last time. So we would issue the, we went clean of the RFP. There's a couple things I want to add, change, and reword. We had issued that in May. Within thirty days, we would have an offer, and we'd bring that back to the board for contract approval. Start work in July.
After you add one.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
And start work in July with a delivery date somewhere around February of twenty-five, to take effect in twenty-five.
Any other questions nearby?
Well, I started early, so I did finish earlier, so. Thank you, Russell. Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You did a tremendous job for us and the taxpayers. We, we do appreciate it.
Won't stand up because it's easy for me to see my notes. I just noticed, have y'all ever pulled a Halls, looked at a Halls paper when you opened it? I just noticed this a while ago. I thought this was funny. It has nothing to do with what I'm about to talk about, right? It says, it's a pep talk, basically. It says, "Don't give up on yourself. The show must go on or work. A pep talk in every drop. Be unstoppable. Seize the day." I don't know. I thought that was just so funny. But that's on a Halls thing, so it really got me motivated this morning.
There you go.
Yep. Breaking us up. How does that happen?
Started losing my voice this morning, so that's why I opened one up this morning. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm going to be sharing, as usual, a mid-year review of the county's financial position that will hopefully reveal to you where we stand at mid-year compared to the same period for the previous year. And so let me see if I can figure out how to use this. There we go. The following slides will provide an analysis of the change in revenues by type, sales tax revenue trends, the change in expenditures by type and by function, some information on debt service, and a review of the county's unassigned fund balance reserves. We'll start with revenues. At mid-year through December, revenues reported in for a significant increase of six million dollars. This is a sixteen and a half percent increase over the same period for the prior year. Over half of that increase is due to the recognition of Aqua Funds that is reflected in that last category right there from transfer from other funds for an increase of about three point eight million. Other categories reporting large increases include adverbal taxes for one point three million and sales and other taxes for seven hundred and seventy-nine mil, uh, seven hundred seventy-nine thousand. The increase in that sales and other taxes is mostly due to the sales tax collections by four hundred and thirty-three thousand for the three months reported, making up most of that total increase. The next category for fees and licenses is largely up to a two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar increase in health insurance contributions from employees. Those are recorded as revenue to support claims, expenditures, and the self-funded health insurance fund. Other fees that showed increases were in public health, EMS, parks and recreation, solid waste host fees, and inspections. For state and federal funding, the absence of COVID-related funds in fiscal year twenty-three and the delay in state grant reimbursements is evident in heavily grant-funded departments like DSS and Health Department. We think most of this is just a timing issue compared to the year before, so I'm, I'm hopeful that that category improves as we go along through the year. On a more positive note, the reduction in that state and federal revenues category is almost completely offset by the next category, which is investment earnings. Due to multiple interest rate adjustments by the Federal Reserve over the past year, the county has recognized a one hundred and ninety-three thousand increase at mid-year compared to the prior year. So that one is going to continue to improve because I don't foresee the Federal Reserve moving back on rates. They're just probably going to move up. Other revenues, the next category includes contributions, donations, insurance reimbursements, and sale proceeds. The reduction of almost three hundred and fifty thousand is due to the receipt of revenues in the prior year that were not received in the current year. Some examples of this would be the cyber insurance proceeds that we got last year that we, of course, didn't get this year. Delayed quarter of ABC profits. They were a little late getting us our quarter this year. Land use plan reimbursements from the city of Roxborough and proceeds from the sale of vehicles. All of those revenues came in the prior year. They didn't come in this year. That's causing the change of the deficit for about three hundred and fifty thousand. We're encouraged, however, that those top two categories are showing some growth, and we feel like this is a fairly positive indicator going into the rest of the year. Any questions about revenues? Well, before I leave revenues, I wanted to give you a further peek at sales tax, which I conservatively estimate will increase for Person County by five hundred and twenty thousand before year end. And that's a worst-case scenario. That would only be a four percent increase compared to the prior year, but it's more likely that we're going to see an increase of around ten to twelve percent, pushing that sales tax collections total well above thirteen million. But I'm reticent to sort of provide a more optimistic picture with the uncertainty of how inflation will impact our sales tax revenues going forward. But that one is looking pretty good. All right, we're going to switch gears to expenditures. This is a comparison of expenditures by type, which includes a mid-year analysis for personnel, operating, capital, and transfer to other funds. Those are the four category types for expenditures. This year, the largest increase is split between personnel and transfers to other funds. Personnel expenditures increased for most all departments. This is due to a four percent cost of living adjustment that was applied this year for employees. Thirteen new positions, an increase in the mandatory state retirement rates, and a significant hike in health insurance rates. EMS overtime is up by about sixty thousand dollars due to, I think, an increase in call volume. DSS and Health Departments reported some of the larger increases through mid-year salary and benefit costs, but that's mostly as a result of those being two of the larger departments with the higher number of employees. Operating costs, the next category, reported an increase of two hundred and eighty-three thousand. Not surprisingly, fuel, supplies, vehicle maintenance, and travel are the highest cost increases across departments as a whole. Departments reporting some of the larger operating increases include DSS Administration and Sheriff's Department. DSS is the largest department and reported increases in various operating expense lines. Fuel and vehicle maintenance are the cost challenges in Sheriff's Department. But operating costs are primarily up for all departments due to the inflationary economy and the elevated fuel costs. The only expense type that reports a reduction is in the capital category. These are small capital items that do not meet the threshold of fifty thousand or more. That's reserved for our capital improvement plan. Although we incurred an increase in vehicle capital by eighty-three, I think by about eighty-three thousand dollars, we reported a larger decrease in equipment capital by a hundred thousand, which is causing that net decrease of seventeen thousand. But from a percentage standpoint, the transfers to the other funds is our largest increase by about thirty-five percent. Transfer to the Capital Investment Fund for a higher allocation for CIP projects and to the Economic Callus Fund to provide support for economic development initiatives causes that large increase of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand to be reported over the prior year. So overall, expenditures are up by almost one point eight million through December. However, the larger increase in revenues of six million dollars generates a four point two million surplus at mid-year, indicating the strong possibility that Person County will report an increase in fund balance reserves at the end of this fiscal year. I'm not ready to say to what point I think it's going to go, but it does seem like the surplus indicates we could go higher. This next slide is another look at expenditures but categorized by function. As you can see, increases are reported across all functions by over two point three million, except for the decrease on the right side in the county's self-funded health insurance fund by five hundred and thirty-five thousand. The functions that increased are listed on the left side of this chart and are sorted by largest to smallest increases. The largest increase is reported, again, in transfers to other funds due to the C, the investment in CIP and Economic Callus Fund. The second largest increase is in human services by almost four hundred thousand, specifically in DSS Administration due to the personnel costs of four new positions and various operational increases. The increase in the education function is the result of the higher current expense allocation for schools and PCC in the current year, as well as the additional expense line added to the Schools Department for fines and forfeitures, which was required by new accounting standards that we implemented at the end of fiscal year twenty-two. The remaining functions are up because of increases in personnel costs, supplies, fuel, maintenance and repair costs, and contracted services. Any questions about expenditures?
What's our revolving fleet policy right now regarding vehicles?
So we have a, we have a fleet fund that we budget those vehicles in every year. And as the department needs to order them, they let me know, and then we move those funds to the department so that they can go ahead and place the orders. We usually try and make sure we know what the estimated cost is from that department. A lot, a lot of times, they'll get a quote. So we don't necessarily move the whole allocation to them. We might just move the portion that we feel like that's represented by the quote, hoping that we can have some reserve to build up in case we had to buy a vehicle at mid-year. So, but... So, but that's right now. And I, I think, of course, Ray determines, you know, he looks at those vehicles and the age and the veh- uh, maintenance records on those to see which ones that he needs to propose for the next year. Any other questions?
The surplus that we hired on the county lot, would that be included with the increase of budgeting as far as, what, what, where would that money go to? Is that where?
You talking about the six million, uh, increase that we're seeing?
Vehicles that we have set?
Oh, I'm sorry, vehicles.
Where, where is, I forget who sold, where does this money go?
So we have a fleet fund.
Okay, so it goes right back to?
It has, it's in a separate fund, so it just goes back into the reserves for that fund.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? All right, moving on. Here it goes. All right, before we leave expenditures, I wanted to share some information on the county's current and proposed debt service. Uh, the county's total outstanding debt service balance at the end of this year is just over seven million. If the board approves to move forward with the high school issuance, the county's total outstanding debt would increase from seven million to about twenty-six million. That would increase the schools' portion of the county's debt to eighty-two percent. Although this is a significant jump, the county's debt capacity is large enough to absorb the increase without overburdening our ability to meet operational commitments. The county's current debt obligations are extremely low, given the fact that very little debt has been issued over the past ten years. However, the results of the finan- of financing any project cost beyond this large issuance for the high school improvements may require tax increase on the, but just depends on the timing and cost of considered projects. The bottom section of this chart is reporting the change in our budget for the county's annual debt payments for next year. With the c- uh, schedule of current debt payments, uh, our budget for next year would be reduced by three, almost three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. If the board were to approve the high school debt, we would still have a budget reduction of twenty, or about twenty-seven thousand, but it would be a smaller cut due to adding a partial payment for the new debt in that year. We wouldn't see a large increase until fiscal year twenty-five, when, uh, a full year of the new debt would take place. This next slide is just a ten-year, um, bar graph showing the county's outstanding debt service uh, from year to year. As you can see, it sort of slides down because we're paying off debt. We're not issuing any new debt and then, of course, uh, at the end of fiscal, well, we were going to issue debt or proposed to issue debt in June for the high school, uh, but then we've heard from them that they can't meet the schedule for having bids, so that has been delayed until October. So really, this bar wouldn't go up until fiscal year twenty-four. But regardless, this graph shows the uptick to incorporate the new debt for the high school after a long period passes of minimal, minimal debt issuances. All right, I want to go over some information about the county's unassigned fund balance levels. Uh, as a reminder, unassigned fund balance, or UFV for short, is the amount of reserves recognized in the general fund and in the county's audit report that is available for appropriation for any public purpose. In fiscal year twenty-one, the county reported a thirty-five percent level of UFV reserves. Last year at this retreat, the board approved a fund balance po- reserve policy that required a transfer of excess UFV over twenty-five percent to Capital Investment Fund to support future debt and capital expenditures. As a result of that new policy guidance, we were able to transfer six point four million from the general fund to the Capital Investment Fund, giving this fund a boost of reserves to help grow our funding model in preparation of future debt. Although we experienced some use of our UFV in fiscal year twenty-two that resulted in a reduction from that thirty-five percent to thirty-one percent, we still recognize reserves over the twenty-five percent target that facilitated a transfer of almost four point three million into the Capital Investment Fund. So just over the two-year period of implementing this policy, we've been able to invest excess reserves of over ten point six million dollars towards our debt funding model. We believe that the four point two million surplus of revenues over expenditures is a positive sign that we will have excess funds over our twenty-five percent target to transfer to our Capital Investment Fund. This would give us another opportunity to further strengthen the management of our reserves and provide a deeper investment into our debt and capital infrastructure. So this is an exciting process now because it does give us a way to manage those excess reserves at year-end, which we will badly need in the CIF to help support new debt as it comes along. All right. So as I always say, let me summarize what we know and what we think we know. Revenues are showing a significant increase of six million at mid-year, a large part due to the recognition of ARPA revenues and increases in properties, uh, property tax and sales tax. Expenditures reported an increase of one point eight million in all functional areas, with the exception of a welcomed reduction in health insurance claims expense. Sales tax is conservatively projected to increase by five hundred and twenty thousand, but this is a worst-case scenario, we think it's going to be much more. Outstanding debt could potentially increase next year to roughly twenty-six million with the high school debt issuance. If this debt is approved, our annual debt service expense next year will still decrease by around twenty-seven thousand due to the paydown of current debt. And lastly, the four point two million surplus of revenues over expenditures uh, reported at mid-year is hopefully a sign that we will recognize more excess reserves to transfer to our Capital Investment Fund after the end of this fiscal year. I know that was a lot of information in a short period of time. Any questions, concerns? All right.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
Back up to ARPA funding.
Yeah.
Now, we have money there that has not been spent. And maybe talk about that a little bit.
Okay.
How it impacted.
So we have, what we have chosen to do, and what most counties have chosen to do, is a revenue replacement process, which basically is a method of supplanting expenses that we already have in place. With this ARPA, with the ARPA requirements for recording these revenues, we can't recognize them as revenues until we have spent the money. And so for the past six months, we have transferred the funds that we spent in salaries and benefits for those selected departments. We've transferred that money, the, the total of those expenses, we've transferred that to the general fund to be recognized now as revenue. So we haven't been able to recognize the whole seven point six million that we are allotted to get because we've only applied six months of salaries and benefits towards that revenue replacement. Um, as you recall, two point seven five million we have set aside for the local match, for the great grants, for the broadband expansion. So that money is sitting, is sitting aside. This, the revenue was just us supplanting that money and, and transferring that to our general fund revenues to be recognized as revenue. So we're going to do that up to a point, uh, leaving the two point seven five million ready for us to spend when that time comes.
Good.
Good question. Anybody else? All right, well, I'm going to hand this over to our debt consultants. Doug and Andrew Carter are here and they're going to talk a little bit about our debt model and the proposals that you all have sort of seen when we had our joint meeting with the Board of Education. And they're going to talk a little bit more about the county's debt capacity and talk about those options that you saw. So feel free to ask questions. This is a great time to test their brains and they are very smart folks and I'm glad they're here.
Thank you, Amy. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, thank you for having us here today. Uh, we were here last year in this very room, almost, it's almost a year to the day to present to us. So we're glad to be back here again. And, uh, since that time, you know, a lot has happened. Uh, the schools have done some more planning, as you heard from Amy. Um, the calendar's been pushed a little bit on when they can get to, uh, get the bids and all that kind of stuff. So we're, we're all prompt and ready for that. But today, we're here to give you the update on the model itself and, uh, moving forward possibly with the project we have going on. So of course, today, um, you know, we're here to discuss your decisions that were made since 2020. A lot of good decisions have been made. Amy just talked about a number of fund balance transfers that have had some very positive effects on the model. Um, we'll also be talking about kind of where we are now. Uh, as we know, the model's a, a living document. It changes as the times change, as interest rates change, as plans change. So you'll see, uh, we'll go through a little bit of the, the history of the model and kind of how we've gotten to where we are now. And that kind of gives more of an indication of how it works over time as we move from projections to actual numbers. Uh, then of course, the future strategic decisions you might need to make and moving forward with, uh, with current projects. All right, so talk about what we've already done, all the good decisions these boards have made. So the first was to establish the CIF, which was what helped drive the model and helped us to be able to predict and project out, uh, expenses and revenues coming in to give you options on what can and cannot be afforded depending on the projections that we have and the financial guardware, guardrails we put up to have a nice, healthy model for you all. On top of that, y'all also adopted some financial policies that helped govern the model itself and keep within those guardrails I was talking about. And one of the, probably the biggest impact was the fund balance transfer policy. Now, this is done through your action every year. It's nothing, it's automatic, but it's part of the policies. As, uh, as Amy said, as the end of the year, once the act for comes in, she's able to calculate what an actual unassigned fund balance is. And then above that twenty-five percent level, y'all can choose to move those funds into the CIF model um, and away from the general side. So it does reduce unassigned fund balance, but with the model and the way that the capital runs through it, your unassigned really becomes kind of your last line of defense, not the first place you go to replace a roof. It's the last place you go to, to replace a roof for one-time spending. So that unassigned fund balance really is your rainiest day rainy fund. But y'all made two transfers, as Amy said. That's totaled just over ten million, almost ten and a half million dollars. That has a very positive effect to the model, obviously, as it goes in. These are revenues that we do not project in the model. So any monies that come over year over year, because we can't expect, can't expect unassigned fund balance to always be over a twenty-five percent level. These are monies that are what I would call gravy to the model. So every time they come in, it's going to make the model look a lot better. We see that mostly through the history of the models that we've been showing to you. So way back in April of twenty-one, we had about thirty-eight million in spending and the ten, 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 eight, that's issuing ten million, ten million two years later, another ten million two years later, and the last one two years later. So it was more of an eight-year plan to get to that thirty-eight million. We showed about one point seven pennies were needed to get this entire plan over the spending schedule. Well, we came back, uh, almost about a year later. What do we have now? We have some actuals that got to get put into the model. So we have actuals, revenues were better than expected, expenditures were better than expected. Uh, so we have some positive impact to the model. So last year when we were here, we showed you that same spending schedule as now was one point five pennies. Due to the positive results of the model, and it being a little conservative, we would come back, come back and tell you it's costing you cheaper than what we estimated because actuals have come in. At that meeting last year is when y'all swung the gavel to move that six point, what, four-ish million dollars it was over into the fund balance for the first time. Well, immediately, you see, it shaved a quarter penny off the spending and we were able to increase spending. It went to a ten, ten, ten plan rather than a ten, ten, eight plan, or a ten, 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 eight plan. So we were able to increase what we were spending over the same amount of period of time, reduce the number of pennies that might have been needed, and that was all due to the first fund balance transfer. So you can imagine, you throw another fourish million in there, it has some pretty positive impact. So what do we have? Current options that we currently have in front of us have been lowered due to a number of different, uh, of categories, fund balance transfer policy. These were monies we did not ex- uh, expect or project in the model until y'all do them. And so now that we can, now that we have the transfer, I can now produce what is the new model and what new costs might be. So that has been a very positive impact to the model. Obviously, better-than-expected results. Revenues and expenditures coming in better than expected has, um, increased what we thought the CIF fund balance would be at the end of the act for year. And then, again, these models are more impacted by timing of a project than the interest rate. We've been projecting interest rates at five percents, you know, since we've been doing this model. So all of the interest rates have risen. Um, in fact, we just, uh, did a twenty-year limited obligation bond for a small town out in the, on the coast, um, good ratings, and they got right about a three and a half percent. So rates are still relatively good in the long term. We're not talking five to seven percent long-term rates, although we're not getting the one point eight, one point nine percent rates we were seeing a couple of years ago. But as far as long-term twenty-year rates go, it's a pretty good long-term rate. So the projects have been pushed mostly due, we thought the first issuance was going to happen sometime at the end of twenty-one. Well, now it's been pushed to almost the end of twenty-three. So pushing the projects forward has had a very positive influence on the model. And so we have now, uh-
I'm sorry. Y'all met me last year, I'm Doug Carter. I'm the daddy. Guys, I just want you to know, as these things have changed and timing has changed, your staff, together with us, have met multiple times with the folks that are going to receive this money. In the, in the majority case, the school board. And so in each case, we have stayed on board with them and explained pretty fully what the process is, you know? That you have to have bids, you have to go to the local government commission, it takes all this time period. So on the project movements and how those have occurred, that's really only occurred after we've gone through an extensive educational and update process. Uh, we're somewhat, as you guys are the issuers of the debt, are the ones that have to wait on timing. So I just want you to know that your folks have spent an extensive amount of time making sure that people understood what the rules were. Hence, the movement from June, when we met a little over a year ago thinking we were going to get to June, now the movement into the August, September, October time period. So there's been a lot of communication and I just want you to be aware of that because I think y'all feel a little good about that.
Any questions at this point? I have been throwing a lot out. I want to slow down a little bit and see if y'all had any questions up to this point. Um, this is our current matrix. We've kind of broken it down instead of showing the summary pages for the models. We've broken down these five options that we've got. Uh, option one, of course, is only focusing on the current project that we have in front of us. So that's the approximately twelve point eight million dollar project. Um, that's the project we're talking about starting here and possibly issuing in the September, October time period. Um, that, of course, requires no revenue into the model. Y'all can, y'all can do that project, no problem, very healthy model. Option two is basically, what's the maximum amount we can do without any additional revenue, given the schedule of the issuances that we have in front of us? So we have a twenty-three project, then two years later, and twenty-five, and two years later after that, and twenty-seven. That's that thirty-six just million dollar number. And that'll move around by hundreds of thousands depending on interest rates and timings and such. But on that particular schedule, we can do twelve point seven in twenty-three, about eleven, almost eleven point four in twenty-five, right at twelve million in twenty-seven. And that would not require any additional revenue. You'll see, though, that even just to get up a little bit more, you know, about a couple million dollars is going to require about a quarter penny's worth of revenue, whether that's a quarter penny- Whether that's a quarter penny on the tax rate, or if that's a quarter penny of savings in the operational budget, wherever that is, about a quarter penny of annual revenue coming into the model every year new will get you that 38.225. And mostly, it's that, that project on the back end. It gets you another almost $2 million on the back end and about $500,000 on that other project. And that was based on some October 2021 estimates that the school had. You'll notice just to get a little bit more money, increasing the '25 and '27 issuances, it's about a half penny. So you'll see small movements in small time periods can have some relatively large movements on the penny. This assumes you put the penny in next year. If it doesn't go in next year, if it goes into the year after, those numbers will increase by a little bit. Because if you don't put it in, we'll have to make some of it up on the back end before we get to what we call the trough of the model, which is as low as you want to go before you say no. That's how low you want your fund balance to get. Then we have, I guess, what we would call the rip, the Band-Aid-off program, the $88 million program, which really changes, it's, it's the school. It's that school in '25, sorry, '24 currently programmed. The rest of the program stays relatively the same. And so that would require about 7.25 cents. And that's, that's ripping it off, but that's getting $88 million worth of new projects and funding all by 2027. So about four years from now, you would invest approximately $88 million. And that's based on that schedule, an issuance in '23, '24, '25, and '27. If any of these projects slip or get moved off, that would, of course, be a positive impact to the model if these things don't happen as fast, if this school in '24 possibly move. But that's the schedule we have on what the requests were from October of this year. And so we just wanted to kind of show a range of what you could do without any revenue, what you could do to meet some of the other requests that have been put forth, and then the full program, as I call, down there on number five. So if you remember from our previous slides, you know, these, these were looking more like a penny, a penny and a quarter. And so due to the movements of the fund balance transfers, the positive movements there, and the projects being pushed out a little bit, we were looking at projects at one point in '22, '24, and '26. So everything's kind of shifted out a little bit. That's had the positive impact, and now we're down to below a penny to get some of these requests when they were looking at above a penny.
Andrew said something earlier, and so did Amy, that I want to emphasize again. If these revenues stay really good like they are now, and we end the year in a positive position, the hope would be that we could have more money coming in to the CIF. Likewise, if interest rates stay with us and the 5% rate we've used in the model becomes 3.5, there'll be some impact on that, although not as big an impact as moving projects. But here is my biggest question mark. And I think, this is why I hoped that we would see, had seen the bids before June 30. I think when we see the bids, if 12,745 is not the number, if it's 14 million or 15 million, that's going to re-impact the whole rest of the model. And so I think part of our discussion with y'all today will be, when do we want to look at that again? When do y'all want to look at how that will impact the overall model? I would think if the 12,745 becomes a higher number, now we can pray for a lower number, but based on what we're seeing for bidding, I don't, I don't think that'd be as easy as it once would have been. So I think then we'll have to relook at the entire rest of the model. What your thoughts on how much, whether or not the 38 million becomes 40 million because of an increased cost? How do we handle all of that? So I think as part of y'all's thought process, maybe today or into the future, is when do we come back to the table and say, what's next? Because I know how important the high school project has been, but that will inform potentially the rest of the model. As well, if we have cash coming over and if interest rates are lower. So there's a number of variables.
So what are you, some of your indicators as to when we would want to meet and talk about this again? How soon, how long?
Well, I think, I think if the bids come in, as I'm remembering, manager, they were going, they were going to be July or August this year.
By August is when anticipated.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
And that is as long as the board authorizes them to resume the process. So a decision by the board that you are supportive and will fund that project, at least that project, making a decision in the next month.
And it's my understanding, based upon our meeting, Amy, we had with them some year or so ago or more, that they're going to bid this all together, because it's a bunch of little bitty projects. So they're going to bid it as a big old package to make it easier to get the bids in. So if they come in August and they're higher than the 12.7, then there'll have to be a decision made on whether they will engineer the projects, value engineer them in low term, or whether it will have to remain at the new dollar. And then I assure management at that time will say, here's what we need to communicate up the line as to what the capacity is and how it's been impacted. And I just, I, I think that's our greatest potential for movement here will be in that bid price. We've made allowances, together with your staff and their approval of this, we've made allowances inside the model to meet interest rates and meet timing. I just think that number is the big question mark.
Correct, and as it goes up, obviously, the total number will go down. So because we're doing it upfront, this number will drop more than what the cost is we put upfront simply because we're front-loading. But yes, after we get, and once we get the bids, we'd be able to run that through the model again and be able to give y'all an update of now, what does it look like as compared? You know, we can look at a zero or these different levels again and tell you exactly how much I want to get you. And then, if the project is done, once the final numbers go in and we have those, then we would come back again and say, the results of the sale have had this impact to the model, and here's our new numbers. So it's really, as I said before, it's the difference between projections and actuals. Once you get some actuals in there, you can really project a little bit better. And that's why every year, the model's getting a little bit better, because we've been projecting worse results to make sure that we meet, at least meet those results and come back with positive results for you, you all. I'll pause here for any questions.
Just a question, maybe, manager Kathy, does the school board already have on paper their request? I mean, are they ready to submit these bids?
So they have done architectural and engineering work. So they are ready to solicit the bids.
So no time delay there, so.
Well, they have put a pause on that rather than requiring additional, there will be work to put those out. So they have paused that in the interest of not incurring any additional expenses until the board does vote to move forward with the project. So once that's done, then they can get the request out and receive the bids, anticipating all of those would be in hand by August. And there are some other steps in the process that we would go ahead and initiate on our end, permitting on their side as well. So all of those activities could start moving forward to meet that fall issuance.
Okay, and that would be prior to July 1?
Yes, so that decision will need to be made based on what we've looked at in terms of the calendar. Making a decision at the March 6 meeting would be ideal to go ahead and move the process forward. We've looked at how the board could go about doing that, most likely approve a resolution, but we'll make sure we have all the appropriate guidance in place, you know, due to, due to how you want to move forward. But making that decision early on will allow the rest of the process to...
Catherine, have they got a list of where they want, location, where they want to put the schools? Anybody discussed that at all?
I do not know about a location for the new school. I, I don't know what their discussions have been around that. I can't answer that question.
Okay, I'm just, a lot of people ask when they hear about this, is where is it going to be? So I was just wondering.
Well, then that would be option five, wouldn't it?
That is option five.
Yeah, if we don't, if we can go that route, fine, but at this point, no.
Guys, I want to give you another calendar follow-up, and Andrew, if I can get the head of you, just tell me. And this is here again, why I think management has been so engaged on doing this. If we don't get bids by about August, we're going to, going to make an October sale date. And in this state, if your audit is not in by October the 30th, you can do a deal up through October without an audit and act for. If you don't have the act for by October the 30th, you cannot issue bonds again until the act for has been received and reviewed by the local government commission. So time is of the essence here in terms of backing things up. And the school board is aware of this. We talked through this with them, well, school staff, I shouldn't say the board. We talked through this with them. So I think that's why it's, it's probably important that y'all make a decision so that they start spending money again, so that they can get the bids out and get them in in August. Because if it's much delayed past that, then it may push us to January before we could do a deal. Because, to be honest, in Amy's circumstance, these audits are very interesting lately. Accounting firms are understaffed, they take a lot longer to get done. And so I'm just saying, so you'll know probably the earlier, if y'all decide to move forward so they can get the bids by August, because much past August, we're not going to get an October deal.
And July 30th is actually the, the target date on this calendar.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So some strategic decisions. There's been some talk about general obligation bonds, which is a method or a mode of financing here in North Carolina that does not require the putting up any pledge of real property. So a GO bond essentially pledges the county's unlimited taxing power, basically saying to the bondholders, when and if needed, we would raise taxes in order to pay the bills on these bonds. It requires a referendum vote, usually in November in the major elections. There was a law change five or six, seven years ago from the legislature that's going to only be done on the major election cycle. So usually, it's the every two years in November. It used to be that you could call a special vote for it, but they got away from allowing that. It's a, it's a process. It's a prescribed legal process that takes approximately six to nine months to get through. So if you back everything up from a November time period, you need to start in the February, March, April time period in order to get through all the meetings, the prescribed time periods in which notices need to be out into the public. It's all very regimented and prescribed time periods. So we would work with your bond counts when coming up with an actual calendar. But usually, if you start in the February to March time period, that gives you plenty of time to get to an LGC approval, which it will acquire, require before November, so that you can place it on a November ballot. And of course, as we know with elections, there are certain dates at which you have to know what's going on the ballot, and you've got to print the ballot, so we'll back everything up from there to give y'all plenty of time. It requires a number of meetings, public hearings, a number of them, public notices that will go out into the paper and such, basically telling them what, what's the size you're looking at, what's your kind of not-to-exceed number you'd be going for on the ballot and what the project is. Once it's on the ballot, it's a simple majority vote, so 51% or 50.1% wins or fails a ballot majority. That gives you the ability to issue the special obligation bonds, which is, of course, a mode, unlike limited obligation bonds, which y'all would use, uses a pledge of real property. So we would pledge the school projects as the collateral under a LOBS. Under a GO, you wouldn't have to pledge any sort of real property. And of course, you are welcome to use any mix of LOBS and GOs to fund these school needs. So it doesn't have to be all GO, doesn't have to be all LOBS. So we could do this first issuance as a LOB, we could do a GO vote for any number of different projects. And then once we obtained that approval, then we could start issuing these GO bonds after the approval. Or you can use any mix of those two. Any question on just GO bond, the process? I know we went through it kind of fast, but it's a list about this long, a whole full page of, of things, and it's very lawyerly, so we...
Just a minor question, I guess. In general, how does a bond of this nature and for the purposes it's going for impact the county's debt service?
Gotcha, so the model is what I would call relatively mode-agnostic. So it doesn't really think about whether it's a GO or a LOB, mostly because we are conservative in our interest rate. So a GO is going to get you a little better interest rate than a LOB will because you're pledging your unlimited taxing power, it's a higher-rated instrument. So you can get a little bit better interest rates with GOs. That's really your benefit. And so in a rising interest rate market, which we're kind of in, when interest rates are really low, the difference between a GO and a LOB may be one or two, one or two basis points, you know? As rates rise, a GO will price better than a LOB will, and you probably get five to 10 bips on your, on your interest rate. So the difference between a 350 or a 340, you know? So that's what the GOs give you, is the ability to issue them a GO mode and get a little bit better interest rate from the LOBs would give you. So the model was relatively agnostic, because I'm going to put a GO in there at 5%, just like I put that LOB in there at 5%. So we could juice it a little bit, but we tend to be a little agnostic as to, because we don't know exactly what the spread between a GO and a LOB would be as far as your savings go. But a GO is going to get you the best interest rate you can get in the market.
Andrew, if we go, if we were to go with this bond, would that delay the schools in what they have to do as far as trying to get their bids in and all that?
On this particular project we're talking about, it would push the project out a year and a half.
That's what I was thinking with that timeframe, it would probably push it on out.
Coming up November, would be this, it'd be next November, so a year, almost a year, almost two years from now, before the vote would be had. And so the fat, as soon as y'all could issue would be, you know, December, but you wouldn't have the vote until November. So we're talking about at least two years from the current point to wait for a GO, for the current project. Now, it may be well-suited to some future projects that are on, on the line that are coming up. So you could use it to replace the mode on the second or third issuance on the, on the program that we have now. And we would just replace it, it would just simply be a replacement. Good questions. So, next steps, how do we move forward from, from here to get moving? As we've said a couple of different times, the school board needs some direction so that they can continue to spend some planning money so that we can get to the bids going out sometime in the May, June, July time period, so that we can get them back in time for the financing. And so we really need to start the process, especially with the local government commission, in the May time period. So that's when we would start the full-throated, we're moving forward with the local government commission. We would have no, we should hopefully know by that period whether y'all have given the go-ahead to, for them to spend some money and get to the bids. So that's kind of the latest we need to really be able to start the whole process. Now, we need some direction before then so that they can get the planning done to get us to the beginning of the financing stage, is what Doug was saying before. But the financing stage full-throated will start in the May time period in order to meet that September or October issuance. If we slip to June or July, as Doug was saying, that may kick us into January or February because of the window of time in which the local government commission will not let us issue bonds until our act for is in. So, and that now requires a two-month head start. So if we get it in November the 15th, you see, we can't even do anything until January the 15th, which is a February LGC approval, which now is, now we're in February or March before we have our money. So you'll see how we're in that kind of precarious time period. If we slip too much, we're going to be forced to push some stuff due to the local government commission's rules. The revenue generation we've been looking at assumes that you would do this as part of the budget adoption in the process you would do in the May and June time period. So if, if we decided to move forward in the next couple of meetings, then we'd have from now... then we'd have from now until the June time period to decide if there would be any change to the budget. When the revenue generation. This first one, cost of construction, this is what Doug was talking about, the bids for the first project come in a little high. That will, again, change possibly what the revenue generation might need to be for future projects. But we'll know that once we get bids in. There's been talk at this, a resolution of intent, possibly at that March meeting. That's what would give the go-ahead to schools to contend to start picking back up on the planning and engineering money they would need so that we can submit the bids, you know, to the to the construction companies in the May, June time period so that we can get them back in time to do any value engineering, get a good price, and bring it to you all at a meeting in August or September for you all to approve the whole, the construction contract. So we kind of have to back everything up from LGC approval and such. And again, we want to state, depending on the cost of the bids that come in for this project, that will then ripple down as to what the other project, if it's higher, it's gonna make these other projects smaller. If you get lucky and they come in lower, you never know, then that would have a positive impact to the model. So I think besides that, it was, we need some sort of, I guess in a future meeting, there will be an indication of whether they continue to spend the planning money so that we can get to the financing and bidding schedule that we currently have in front of us, which they think they can meet after discussing with them again. If some if some forward go-ahead is given, they can start doing the planning.
Could you talk a little bit about the county's debt capacity? Because as Amy mentioned, we currently have quite a bit of debt capacity. So moving forward with the high school project is not going to significantly impact that. But if we were to move forward with any of the other options, can you just comment on the the debt capacity and then what that looks like going forward for future decisions that the board may face for capital items, whether that be for the county's purpose, school system, community college?
I understand. So in these models, in the options that we projected, this is consuming all of the capacity. Meaning the .25 or .5 cents or 7.25 cents, we pay for these programs, but nothing else in that time period. So if you wanted to do more than this, more than just school projects or other projects, it might require a different revenue. So you'll see your natural, just what you have capacity in the model, that's about this number. That's your zero and about this number. So currently, right now, project agnostic, doesn't matter who's getting the money, that's about the chalk and stem in this, through 2027, depend, on about that schedule. Now, if we did it all upfront, maybe land one of those like 30, you know, 32 million, all upfront, we just did, you know, rip the band-aid off. So that's approximately what your natural capacity is now. And these are, of course, planned projects. None of these are set in stone, or these are all decisions of of the board. So I would say that's about your natural capacity right now. And anything above that requires some sort of revenue generation. But the options we've shown you consumes all the capacity of that current model without a whole lot of wiggle room for additional projects besides the PEGO and other projects that we currently have inside the model, which we do have reserved into the future. So you're not, you're not eating up a PEGO product program to pay for this, or eating up your vehicles. I think we have that in the mall, all that kind of good stuff we were talking about earlier. It doesn't eat up any of that, we do reserve room for it, but it does not allow you to issue any more debt besides what's been identified here. Is that, I'm sorry.
Yes, that does.
Let me say one other thing, too, that that, you know, you guys haven't had a rating in a long time. So we have to look at credit rating. You have so little debt now, even if you issued $88 million and you had well over $2,000 per capita in new debt, I don't worry about that from a credit rating perspective. So I think your real capacity from a rating implication is how much you're willing to put into the pot to pay for it, as opposed to are we hitting a limit? One of the, you you mentioned limits, you know, having more money than this, but I I'm not so much worried from a rating perspective.
Yeah, meaning if this was the plan and this was done, this is not gonna bring down your rate. I believe that this level of debt would be negatively impacted on your ratings. Because other type of projects you're doing, schools and buildings, so you're not building Coliseum, you know? Something like theater, something like that, so.
Will we be able to know the results from the pay study before we get to have this answer for school board?
I do have preliminary numbers from the pay study, which we'll talk about today. So I do have preliminary numbers and we're we're working on refining those. That's part of today's discussion, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. You do have more time if you'd like to talk some.
Yeah, Amy, you got it through early, we're through early.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, we're quick. Appreciate what you're doing for us. A year ago, we kind of wondered if these guys, maybe they know what they're talking about. I would say now, I think you do know what you're talking about. And you advised us, Sam, and in previous conversations, Plushell was there, indicate that. So we we're very appreciative of what you advise us and the direction we've taken. And it's good, Sam, financial results.
I I guess one more thing that we've talked about that maybe we should share as a group before y'all finish up is just the decision-making process. So next steps in the process, the board can decide, move forward with the high school project. Pass a resolution to support that, we move forward with it. We initiate the process to move forward with advertising the construction bids. And then the board may indicate you have an interest in funding up to option four or an interest in figuring out how to fund up to option five. And indicate when you would like to revisit that. Do we come back and talk about that again, once we have completed the audit? Once we know what that fund balance transfer looks like? And then we look at the impact on the model again and on what that would mean to the tax rate, you know, in the fall as we prepare for the next budget year. So there are some timing considerations there. There are many different factors. We've talked about the unknown. Some of those may be negative, some of those may be positives. We are looking at potentially being at, adding to the fund from that unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. And, you know, looking at potential revenue growths that growth that may have a positive impact. So is there anything that y'all would like to add to that as far as the timing of the decision-making process and the stages of it?
I would just say, because we don't have bids before June 30th, if a decision is made to do two, three, uh, three or four, and the number comes in higher on the first deal, that would impact the additional revenue need for three and four, unless we lowered the amount that was going to be go to the school board in future years by the amount of the increase in the early year. So that's the only impact I see is because we won't see the bids until after the budget process.
I would, I would like to insert Roxbury is a big rumor mill. And the past several months, I caught wind that a private donor was going to give us land for this new school. And it's on the northeastern sector of the county. Don't hold me to that. That's a rumor. So that's something to put under our caps and hope and pray for. What is the size of a typical school? And how many schools are we looking at relocating? Is it Woodland, North End? To this one facility, correct?
When we talked about this in October, the schools indicated that they would like to build one new elementary school and close two schools, is what they had said at that time. And then also build out a planned addition at Stories Creek. So it's a Stories Creek addition, one completely new school. I I don't know off the top of my head what we're looking at in terms of size, the property that that would be cited on, or any discussions they've had as far as citing.
That's just, it's just what I caught off the street, 'cause I run the streets daily pretty hard and it sounds promising to me.
Well, it would take a lot of input from the school, because geographically, you've got to consider that.
Right, yeah.
Redistricting, and so that would be something the school board would have to consider in depth. So I don't know if northeast is the preferred location. I don't have a clue. That would be something they would certainly, and they may have already discussed that. I don't know. Going forward, but. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you very much. So we're 10 minutes ahead of schedule. We're gonna take a break now and then we'll come back to. Does that bother anybody?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, all right, we'll take a, take a few minutes here and we'll, we'll come back and Andrew, Kathy will talk about our budget preview. So we'll, we'll just recess here for a little bit.
And of course, we are very early in the process, so this is just some general information of what we're seeing. Um, our departments have been working for the last, um, month or so on their budgets, getting in their fee requests, forecasting their revenues, uh, looking at what their expenditures might be. So we have all those requests in our system, um, but we have not, uh, been through everything yet. We'll start meeting with departments here over the next few weeks. So we're hoping to give you an idea of where we currently stand, um, and then get some direction on the board for how we move forward with that. We did talk, uh, some in the joint meeting with the school board about our current, uh, conditions. There are quite a few, um, unknowns out there. As you know, we're all facing workforce challenges with, uh, recruitment and retention. There are costs associated with that. Um, the carbon plan is more firmly on our radar now, uh, with that coming out at the end of twenty twenty-two. Um, we do know that the Duke Energy coal plants will be retired, um, over this decade. What that means in the end is still a big unknown. We do not know what the replacement generation might look like there and what impact that will have on the county's revenue streams. Um, then we have, um, economic development that we are very much focused on, and in particular, in attracting, um, a project to our mega site, which could also enhance our revenues, um, add to our local economy with the creation of jobs, um, attract more people to our community. And of course, along with that, we continue our efforts to support our existing businesses here, um, and their expansion. Um, but with that being said, uh, there could be additional revenues associated with that particular project. Um, we could also be facing some expenses on the county side if we were to need to purchase, um, some of the mega site property. So we just need to keep that on our radar as a potential unknown. And we'll talk in more detail about capital needs. You are well-versed now in the needs from the school system. Um, Piedmont Community College also recently completed a master planning process, so they have, um, good ideas about how to add to what they're contributing to our community and strengthening our growth, um, and there are costs associated with those. And then with the county, we too have capital needs. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more at the, um, next slide about what those numbers look like. So any questions right here about some of those big factors that we want to make sure that we're thinking through as we approach the budget process? Okay. So, capital needs. Um, we have an annual CIP where we plan, we look at a five-year horizon. So we plan for projects, um, in the, and, and seek approval to fund projects for the upcoming fiscal year. The plan evolves, um, in each planning period. Last year, or for this current fiscal year, for fiscal year twenty-three, our plan funded six point one million dollars of capital improvement projects. And, uh, about half of that was funded through a general fund contribution, but we also used, um, other types of funding to, uh, fund that particular plan, including some grant funding, um, and, uh, some, uh, fund balance allocation. We are trying to keep our annual plan at, on a pay-go basis, so as far as the amount of money that we're using from our general fund, at the three point two million dollars or less figure. So that is our target, not to exceed on an annual basis. That is the amount that has been determined, um, in conjunction with our debt consultants for how much funding our debt model can sustain, sustain year after year. So when they talked about the debt model and all of the different assumptions that are feeding into that, this three point two million dollars is the figure that is worked into that model to say, we will fund that level of projects each year. Just on an ongoing basis, we intend to allocate three point two million dollars of our general fund through to accomplishing that amount of capital projects in any given year. So over a five-year planning period, that amount is sixteen million dollars. Well, in this year alone, for that year one, for our upcoming fiscal year twenty-four, we have over thirty million dollars of requests. And so go back to that three point two million dollar figure that we are seeking to fund, and you can see how great that is. So a significant portion of that is the school system's request. That's a little over half, but you can still see that the remaining portion of that is still significantly more than we would be able to work into our annual funding plan at the three point two million dollar level. Um, over that five-year horizon, we had a hundred and twenty, almost a hundred and twenty-five million dollars worth of requests. So compare that to the sixteen million dollar figure that we would be looking to fund. So, um, looking at fiscal year twenty-four, that says recommended. Of course, this is still very preliminary and it does seem like numbers, um, and assumptions and, um, just conditions change routinely. So Amy looks at that CIP and she's moving things around and trying to figure out how we can do more and how we might be able to accomplish that. Right now, we have about seventeen point six million dollars in the plan. Um, much of that is, uh, financing for the school system projects, but we'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like again. That's not the final recommended amount. It is still in flux until it is presented to the board as a recommended plan. But currently, we're looking at using general fund, um, some fund balance that we have in our CIP fund, which is different than our CIF fund. The CIF fund is what's set aside separately to fund that debt model. The CIP fund is what we're pulling from, um, annually for these projects, and sometimes there may be money left over from projects, and that goes into the CIP fund balance for future capital projects. Um, we are potentially looking at some money from the airport construction fund to purchase a tractor for the airport. The community development projects fund, that's the money that Republic is donating to us on an annual basis. It's a hundred thousand dollars, so we can go to them with some project proposals. So there's a couple of projects that have been, um, proposed that we think could use that funding. Um, grants are options, um, particularly, uh, for the Person Industries and Recycling Center merger. We will be looking at grant funding to help with that. Um, debt proceeds for the, the schools, if the board decides to move forward with that. Um, other funding sources, we're constantly looking for grant opportunities and always welcome, if anything catches your eye, to send it our way. Um, and then we still have some ARP funds that are available. So if there are some priorities that don't make it into, um, the initial recommendation, you could certainly decide to move forward with using some of those funds to, um, be able to do some of these one-time, um, projects that are, have been proposed, uh, through the CIP process. And just as a reminder, we have about two point four million dollars of ARP funding that the board has not made a decision about how to allocate it. We've got the two point seven five reserved for broadband. You've reserved two million for economic development, done a couple of other projects. So that leads to, leaves two point four million dollars unallocated. I, I have a little bit more details about the CIP and then I'll see if there's any questions. But just to, um, give you an idea of some of the things that were requested that we have not been able to work in even to the five-year planning period, um, backup nine-one-one center for our communications division and emergency services facility. So they've had a feasibility study conducted and the board will receive, um, a report on that in March. But the estimated cost of being able to relocate our EMS staff, which are outgrowing their current facility. Uh, we don't have a formal EOC in place, so creating an emergency operations center, um, moving our nine-one-one communications in with them, um, fire marshal and emergency management, putting everybody together. The price tag for that is about forty million dollars. Uh, parks and ride projects, uh, there've been, uh, many that we've talked about through the ARP funding process, and those have also been submitted as CIP requests. Many of those are currently not in the plan due to the, the price tag associated with that and the immediate need to fund the PI merger. There is, uh, there's a couple of new roofs that have been, uh, delayed that would normally have been worked into the replacement schedule, but these have been assessed and determined that they do not, um, need to be plugged in in the next five years. And then Piedmont Community College submitted a request for a general occupation building, which would be built on their campus. Um, the cost of that, I believe, is, uh, around twenty-two-ish million dollars, and then the remainder of that, eight, is twenty-eight million, I think. And then the twelve million dollars would be to backfill the space that would move into the new building to renovate that for, um, enhanced space on campus. So that's forty million dollars. So we, staff at this point has not found a way to work these requests into our CIP over the next five years, going back to the one hundred-plus million dollars of requests that we have. Um, these are some very big-ticket items. So as we move forward, if any of these projects, um, interest the board, if you have a strong, uh, feeling about any of those, please let me know. We can have further discussion around this. Um, but as you can see, particularly those, uh, two higher-priced projects would likely be, uh, projects that would need to be debt-financed in the future. And we go back to that capacity, um, issue that we talked about. And once you take up the capacity.
...of jobs, attract more people to our community. And of course, along with that, we continue our efforts to support our existing businesses here and their expansion. But with that being said, there could be additional revenues associated with that particular project. We could also be facing some expenses on the county side if we were to need to purchase some of the Megasite property. So we just need to keep that on our radar as a potential unknown. And we'll talk in more detail about capital needs. You're well versed now in the needs from the school system. Piedmont Community College also recently completed a master planning process. So they have good ideas about how to add to what they're contributing to our community and strengthening our growth. And there are costs associated with those. And then with the county, we too have capital needs. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more at the next slide about what those numbers look like. So any questions right here about some of those big factors that we wanna make sure that we're thinking through as we approach the budget process? Okay. So, capital needs. We have an annual CIP where we plan, we look at a five-year horizon. So we plan for projects in the, and seek approval to fund projects for the upcoming fiscal year. The plan evolves in each planning period. Last year, or for this current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, our plan funded six point one million dollars of capital improvement projects. And about half of that was funded through a general fund contribution. But we also used other types of funding to fund that particular plan, including some grant funding and some fund balance allocation. We are trying to keep our annual plan on a pay-go basis, so as far as the amount of money that we're using from our general fund, at the three point two million dollars or less figure. So that is our target, not to exceed on an annual basis. That is the amount that has been determined in conjunction with our debt consultants for how much funding our debt model can sustain, sustain year after year. So when they talked about the debt model and all of the different assumptions that are feeding into that, this three point two million dollars is the figure that has worked into that model to say, "We will fund that level of projects each year." Just on an ongoing basis, we intend to allocate three point two million dollars of our general fund through to accomplishing that amount of capital projects in any given year. So over a five-year planning period, that amount is sixteen million dollars. Well, in this year alone, for that year one, for our upcoming fiscal year twenty-four, we have over thirty million dollars of requests. And so, go back to that three point two million dollar figure that we are seeking to fund, and you can see how great that is. So a significant portion of that is the school systems' request. That's a little over half, but you can still see that the remaining portion of that is still significantly more than we would be able to work into our annual funding plan at the three point two million dollar level. Over that five-year horizon, we had a hundred and twenty, almost a hundred and twenty-five million dollars worth of requests. So compare that to the sixteen million dollar figure that we would be looking to fund. So, looking at fiscal year twenty-four, that says recommended. Of course, this is still very preliminary, and it does seem like numbers and assumptions and just conditions change routinely. So Amy looks at that CIP, and she's moving things around and trying to figure out how we can do more and how we might be able to accomplish that. Right now, we have about seventeen point six million dollars in the plan. Much of that is financing for the school system projects. But we'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like. Again, that's not the final recommended amount. It is still in flux until it is presented to the board as a recommended plan. But currently, we're looking at using general fund, some fund balance that we have in our CIP fund, which is different than our CIF fund. The CIF fund is what's set aside separately to fund that debt model. The CIP fund is what we're pulling from annually for these projects. And sometimes there may be money left over from projects, and that goes into the CIP fund balance for future capital projects. We are potentially looking at some money from the airport construction fund to purchase a tractor for the airport. The community development projects fund, that's the money that Republic is donating to us on an annual basis. It's a hundred thousand dollars. So we can go to them with some project proposals. So there's a couple of projects that have been proposed that we think could use that funding. Grants are options, particularly for the Person Industries and Recycling Center merger. We will be looking at grant funding to help with that. Debt proceeds for the, the schools, if the board decides to move forward with that. Other funding sources, we're constantly looking for grant opportunities and always welcome, if anything catches your eye, to send it our way. And then we still have some ARP funds that are available. So if there are some priorities that don't make it into the initial recommendation, you could certainly decide to move forward with using some of those funds to be able to do some of these one-time projects that are, have been proposed through the CIP process. And just as a reminder, we have about two point four million dollars of ARP funding that the board has not made a decision about how to allocate it. We've got the two point seven five reserved for broadband. You've reserved two million for economic development, done a couple of other projects. So that leaves two, leaves two point four million dollars unallocated. I have a little bit more details about the CIP, and then I'll see if there's any questions. But just to give you an idea of some of the things that were requested, that we have not been able to work in, even to the five-year planning period. Backup nine-one-one center for our communications division and emergency services facility. So they've had a feasibility study conducted, and the board will receive a report on that in March. But the estimated cost of being able to relocate our EMS staff, which are outgrowing their current facility. We don't have a formal EOC in place, so creating an emergency operations center, moving our nine-one-one communications in with them, fire marshal and emergency management, putting everybody together. The price tag for that is about forty million dollars. Parks and Rec projects, there've been many that we've talked about through the ARP funding process, and those have also been submitted as CIP requests. Many of those are currently not in the plan due to the, the price tag associated with that and the immediate need to fund the PI merger. There is, there's a couple of new roofs that have been delayed that would normally have been worked into the replacement schedule, but these have been assessed and determined that they do not need to be plugged in in the next five years. And then Piedmont Community College submitted a request for a general occupation building, which would be built on their campus. The cost of that, I believe, is around twenty-two-ish million dollars. And then the remainder of that is twenty-eight million, I think. And then the twelve million dollars would be to backfill the space that would move into the new building, to renovate that for enhanced space on campus. So that's forty million dollars. So we, staff at this point has not found a way to work these requests into our CIP over the next five years. Going back to the one hundred-plus million dollars of requests that we have, these are some very big-ticket items. So as we move forward, if any of these projects interest the board, if you have a strong feeling about any of those, please let me know. We can have further discussion around this. But as you can see, particularly, those two higher-priced projects would likely be projects that would need to be debt-financed in the future. And we go back to that capacity issue that we talked about. And once you take up the capacity, taking on any of these other projects, you will need to identify some additional revenue sources for those. So what we have worked into the plan for the upcoming year is getting the Person Industries' expansion project underway over at the recycling center. So that has been greatly scaled down from what you saw from the presentation, from the consultants. We have gone back to the drawing table. Amanda has reworked that design. It is there, to meet their basic needs, it's now a one-story addition. And focuses in on that essential daily space that they need. So the overall cost of that project has been greatly reduced. It's about two million dollars in the next fiscal year. And Amanda is seeking grant funding, which we are hopeful could cover about half of that expense. We're looking at an HVAC system project in the Person County Office Building. So that would address the entire facility. I think the school board wing would be the first that would receive some repairs. This is not even the price tag to replace the system. This is to repair it so that it operationally will function. And we have lots of aging parts associated with that system. It's becoming harder and harder to make repairs. The projects for Parks and Rec are the ones that we identified potentially to use with the community investment or development funds from Republic. So that's the Kirby Rooftop Studio and converting three picnic shelters at Mayo Park to cabins. And then we have some other projects, working on an EMS North Station, funding EMS equipment that we've worked into the plan. For the schools, we've got the, the high school improvements project and beginning a project at South Elementary to replace the roof. That one roof project has been estimated at two point four million dollars to replace that roof. So that, the building's kind of in quadrants. So the goal is to replace about a quarter of the roof in this upcoming fiscal year and through that process, determine the extent of the damage. And we're hopeful that the estimated cost of repairing the entire roof may come in less than what's been projected. Maybe the damage is not as extensive as it appears to be. But we wanted to, to take that step to get a better idea of the total project. So then for the community college, we have the final year of funding for their early college building. They've been working on a project for chiller room upgrades, science lab renovations, so continuing the funding for that. So this is so far what we're looking at as being what we can work into our plan for next year. But I just wanted to, to show you kind of where we are with that right now and underscore just how many projects are out there as potential needs that we have not been able to address. Any questions so far?
Ms. Andrew Cathy, the HVAC at the County Villain, that does not include the auditorium upgrade. Is that right? Is it two separate?
Right. That is a separate system, and we're already working that into the auditorium project.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. So, this is just an overview of the school systems' requests. I know we've already gone over that quite a bit in detail over the past week and again this morning. So, you know, we've, we've shown you that a half penny tax increase fully funds the requests that they presented to the board early on. And that is to address safety and ADA and deferred maintenance issues primarily. There would be a debt issuance scheduled in three phases. So we are saying that a decision is ideally to be made at that first meeting in March. And the reason why is because they have already done quite a bit of work for, with an architect and engineering firm. So they are very close to being able to advertise for bids, but there is still some work that needs to be done. And they need to have enough lead time to get them back on this project, get restarted with the architects and engineers so that they can move forward with advertising the bids in order to get the responses back by the end of July. So that is, and, and on our part, there are steps that the county needs to take. We need to start opening up communications with our bond council and with the LGC. We need to start outlining all of the various steps and all of the documentation and analysis that's needed for that. So being able to have some direction from the board sooner rather than later is what we're gonna need to be able to stay on that schedule to issue the debt in the August-September timeframe, if that's what the board would like to do. And they did talk this morning about that full project and what that would mean, the eighty-eight million dollar project. And if we were to do that, then about, you could, you could go ahead and find that. As they said, I mean, they, we have the capacity to do that most likely without jeopardizing our credit rating. Again, it's maximizing it, it is raising, potentially raising the tax rate seven point two five cents if that's the avenue you go to generate those additional revenues. The board may consider funding the high school project or the thirty-eight million dollar project, and then maybe going out with a bond referendum to see if the public would get behind the new construction. That would be a GO bond referendum for 2024. And if you were to want to move forward with that, we'd need a decision in about a year so we can start working through that process and get it on the ballot in November. So, yes?
The, their request for the upgrades at the high school. Number one, this void is responsible for school facilities. It's mandated. But the repairs and upgrades there are primarily ADA. Is that correct? Mostly?
There's, much of it is ADA. There are some safety issues that need to be addressed as well.
Right, so.
There's, it's entrances, the bathrooms are significant. There's quite a bit of work that's needed in the stadium to make it ADA compliant. And also, just the, structurally, it needs some, some work.
Security.
Security, I, I, I can't remember every specific of this project.
They have some CIP project requests for, to address security, but that's not part of the, that's not part of the, the school improvements that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay.
They are addressing some of those concerns separately. I'm not sure if there are any that are, are still in this particular project related to security.
Part of their plan is to take the lottery money, maybe three hundred thousand dollars a year, fold it into this.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that is in the debt model. So when you look at these numbers, that already takes into account three hundred thousand dollars each year in the lottery proceeds. So we are directing those towards this debt service.
That's pretty typical amount each year, correct?
For the lottery, it does vary. I mean, that appears to be a pretty conservative estimate. And that's what we've tried to do with this debt model, is to make very conservative estimates. I know there was a question in the joint meeting about assumptions as far as tax revenues going forward. We have, you know, we have conservative, we have not estimated a drop in the tax revenues as a result of the carbon plants closing, because that is still a big unknown. But what we factored into this debt model, we have updated the penny to be the five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that Russell has estimated for the next fiscal year. And we have just kept that the same all the way down. But as, as they said this morning, you know, each year, we look at that model again each time we get new information and we make adjustments. And so far, that's worked to our advantage, and we have seen improvements. So it is possible that some additional debt capacity will open up over time. You know, even if the board were to move forward with these projects, you know, we will likely be able to add overtime to that model. But we are trying to be very conservative based on the information that is currently known in creating the model.
Just buy more lottery tickets. You won't catch me buying more.
Would it be possible for the, on the bond referendum, to include PCC's debt request as well for new school construction?
It would be. So you could bundle those together. We would need to add that to the debt model. And again, in a year from now, when you're having that discussion, we will have more information about the timing of those projects, when that debt would need to be issued, what our anticipated penny would look like for next year, what our fund balance transfer hopefully would have been at the end of this year. So we would have new information, and we could calculate what the impact would be on the tax rate if we were to use that as more focused on education and fold in the new school construction and the PCC request.
If you go that bond route, including all this, what's the timelines on that?
So, we would need to make a decision, like they said this morning, in about a year.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
The long range, if we go that route, if we go the whole enchilada, so to speak. How long will we lock in to repayment?
That would be a twenty-year financing as well, right, Amy?
It's twenty years now.
Yeah, okay.
It used to be thirty, but they dropped it back to twenty.
Any other questions before we move on to the next slide? That was a lot about capital, just because we were kind of blown away at everything that came in. So, you know, we are trying to be very thoughtful and continuing conversations about those requests, figuring out what are the priorities. We have not had a meeting yet with PCC. We've had some offline conversations, just one-on-one conversations with them. But we will be having that as soon as our operating budget comes in. Staff will get together and talk through their priorities of where we stand with their request now. We'll continue our, the conversations that we're having with the school system as well. When you look at our operating growth in our revenues, and of course, we have many other revenue sources, but that is the largest source of revenue in our budget. So, think about what we have now as a baseline, looking at about a million dollars growth from the, from the growth in the tax base. Well, you asked about the classification and pay study. So an initial price tag, their initial, this is our analysis, this is our initial recommendation, came over, came in just over two million dollars, which is kind of what we were anticipating. We have also said all along that we will go through all of that with a fine-tooth comb. We will have conversations with the consultants about their assumptions and how they arrived at that particular figure. And we will work at various funding scenarios, various approaches to implementing the study. So I can tell you so far, what they've done is they have done a market analysis. So they have made recommendations to say, "This is where your salary ranges should be based on your market, and this is where all of your positions should fall within that range." They have also looked at some inflationary measures. So they've made some recommendations about going beyond where the market is currently. So that's one of those things that we're gonna have to look at. You know, do we take the approach to come up to market now? And then we figure out an annual strategy for how to sustain that going forward. So if we were to do that, then that could cut out some of the inflationary figures that they've worked in. So we're looking at making those adjustments. We're also looking at how they've placed everybody within the range to determine if that's the approach that we should take, or if there's a, a better approach. So, staff are working on this diligently and are refining those recommendations. And then the next step in the process is that department heads will get a report for each of their departments so that they can then go through all of their positions and provide feedback back to HR and the consultants as we work through finalizing a recommendation, which will come to you in this budget process. Yes?
Do we have a timeline on when this will be completed?
So, it will be completed in advance of the budget process. So it will be folded into the manager's recommended budget. So, in May, you will, and you'll receive a presentation in advance of that with details. But haven't worked out the exact timing of all of that. But it will be worked into this current budget process so the board can approve how you would like to implement that.
Good, thank you. Is there an average percentage increase per?
I don't know what that is right now, so.
How does, how does this compare to the old MAP study that was done a few years ago? And that was a significant increase. What's the difference in what we do now versus then?
And I was not here for that study. I don't know if Amy has more background. We've done similar studies to this. I think that one was more of a compression analysis though.
The last one we did was compression analysis. You may be talking about the one, the actual study that we did under the MAPS group.
Right.
And, and that's similar to, I think, what, what we're having done here, except I would say this group that we're working with now is looking more in-depth at the actual positions. So they, this is, this was a much deeper look into the responsibilities for each position. I think they, I'm not sure if they're looking, I think they're also looking at maybe a level of experience in that position. There's lots more parameters of things that they're looking at compared to the more linear model that the MAPS group used.
The MAPS was sort of a catch-up?
It was. And this one is, this one is somewhat essentially as well.
Okay.
The last study we had was not a full salary study. It was more of a compression study to deal with the compression issues that had been created from us not having, not getting behind the market. And so there was a lot of, a lot of issues with employees getting too close together that, you know, your supervisor was making less than, than the subordinate. So there was a lot of issues with that. The compression study was more of a, kind of a Band-Aid approach to try and fix some of that. But in the meantime, we've still gotten way behind the market. So now we're, we're facing another catch-up to get more in line with market, with the market study.
The MAPS study, it was a multi-year process, wasn't it?
The MAPS study was implemented, I think, by the board at that time. They decided to do a multi-year approach because of the, of the expense. The, the problem with that is that you, you are already behind by the time you do the second implement, second phase implementation. And so it, it's not really a, it's not really a recommended way to, to implement that kind of project because you're, you're really not addressing and getting everybody caught up to where they need to be. The, the nice thing about this particular model is that they gave us, they're gonna give us some, use of some software that helps us to maintain and try to stay up with the market so that we don't get behind like we have continued to do with these market studies. You know, we hit it with the market study, and then for years, we don't have anything done. And then we're way behind, and then we're having catch-up again, so it's gonna be a big hit again. If we can maintain it and sort of stay up with the market as we go, then hopefully, we don't have to do that big catch-up. But for now, we're, we are behind. So it is gonna be a price tag.
So, I mean, with the, from what I'm hearing, the, the recommendation, once this study is completed, price tag, two million dollars what we anticipate on it, instead of just pull the Band-Aid off and implement the, the pay scale adjusted salaries at that moment? And that's gonna be?
Probably, that would be a better approach as far as being able to get everybody caught up where they need to be and being able to maintain it from that point on. You do, if you do a phased-in approach, then you're, you're catching up that, that first phase, but you're already gonna be behind on the next two phases of, of implementation. So it's, it's just not ideal.
So if you go this route, and you do get everybody up to, up to par, so to speak, how does that work going forward, year after year after year?
Right. And so that's what this, this nice software feature is from this. Right, and so, that's what this, this nice software feature is from this, this, in this model is it allows human resources to be looking to making sure that, okay, well, we need to, we need to address and probably get this position caught up to, cause we're, we've gotten a little bit behind in the market just for this position. Instead of having to look at, you know, at, at all the positions at one time and then having to get them caught up, it allows them to maintain that going forward.
Which would make budgeting simpler?
It would absolutely make budgeting simpler, yes.
Well, one of the problems, I hear it repeatedly and HR does too, our compensation is less than surrounding counties.
Right.
And it impacts retention.
Yes.
And so, I mean, it's expensive. I understand, get all that, but it's important that, that we try to stay up to par. Of course, I don't think we'll ever be on the same level as Wake County and the great city of Mecklenburg, or the state of Mecklenburg, but anyway, we need to do what we can to maintain the retention that we need there and the long-term employees. That pay, that's beneficial in the long run, so.
Is this study based on like the surrounding counties? It's not reaching out further beyond the surrounding counties a person, correct?
We have a defined labor market in the study and I cannot tell you off the top of my head exactly which jurisdictions were included in that and if they were able to get responses from all of them, but we will definitely share that information with you. But it did definitely incorporate at the surrounding.
That's what I was remembering, yes.
Cause that's who we have a greater potential to lose employees to commuting out. And we would also love to attract some of them in from the surrounding counties, so that has a factor as well. Okay, so we will be sharing more information about that. In addition, we have twenty-three new position requests for the upcoming year. So, that, you know, just for comparison purposes, we thought there were a lot that got approved last year and that was thirteen positions. And in the year before, there were only five new positions. So, that is a significant request that we will be working with departments on, again, prioritizing and determining what might make it into the recommended budget. Vehicles, we also have the most vehicles requested this year, twenty-seven new vehicles have been requested. We funded eight last year, twelve the year before, five the year before that. So, there are some departments that have pent up need because we haven't been able to replace vehicles, some because there hasn't been the inventory, some because they just haven't been budgeted each year. So, that is the, the current request that's been submitted. So, Ray is currently going through that now.
How many did you say for last year?
We funded eight in the budget last year. Technology, so we have, the, the line item for technology requests in the department has gone up for the next year. Chris is working on strategies to limit that increase. But we also have increases in our maintenance contracts for cybersecurity and just routine IT services. So, we are looking at some increases there.
What about Intergov?
So, Intergov, we are looking at, we have gone through that contract and are going, and I've discussed that with Chris and with Dale, so I'm going to work on a letter to Intergov. I think we may have some slight savings in that contract, not significant. But we are, we're continuing to work with them on their level of customer service and the expectations associated with what we're paying for.
More concerned about customer servicing than I would be anything else. Does it work for us?
So, well, and Chris is here, but it does seem to be meeting our needs internally. I mean, there are a lot of, there are, are still challenges with that that we're trying to work through and it's more a frustration piece with just kind of what, you know, as far as the response from Tyler. Right now, it's just, it's an issue with how it talks to our GIS. And it seems like it should be pretty straightforward to troubleshoot that, but it seems problematic on their end to get it configured correctly. So, if we can keep, just keep working on it, I mean, our, our departments are using it effectively, but there are definitely some frustration points there and it's time-consuming to try to work through those within Intergov.
Well, the frustration point should be a focal point. And we do that on a annual contract basis?
Yes.
So, roughly, how much does that cost us a year?
It's about fifty-five thousand dollars for Intergov.
That sounds right.
And for that amount of money, what are we getting?
Well, that is the, so, so far, we paid that on an annual basis. Well, there were other costs too, but, okay, so this is the third. We've made three, maybe four payments to Intergov at this point in annual maintenance. So, we've been with them for quite a while now. But that is to receive support from them, to receive upgrades to the system so that they can keep us on the most current version, to keep it, keep it operating. That's what we're paying, and licensing. So, it's the privilege to use the system in our daily operations. So, those are the costs that we are paying on an annual basis to Intergov.
Do they do those updates on their own or are they prompted by, by the county?
Some of them are driven by them, others, we have to have our IT staff and our staff involved in making those upgrades, updates.
Generally, how do you feel about working with them or vice versa?
It definitely has its frustrating points. I mean, and staff is not, not opposed to switching. We have a very large time and monetary investment in this system and there is not going to be a perfect system. So, I'm not sure that we've reached the point where we're ready to throw it in and go through another implementation process, which is very stressful on staff.
Well, their response to our concerns would, would be important. It would tell us something, but. So, I, I hope they're trying to work with you. But that's, that's an extremely important piece of the puzzle in Person County. And they, they need to be able to work together, all the players in the game, so to speak, and without reaching those frustration points. So, we'll, I think they'll keep working on it.
Would, would we estimate a third of that, those problems are coming from the external contractors?
I really think a lot of it has to do with the way the system was set up. It, I think there were a lot of bumps in the road with the cyber event and the, and COVID that impacted the implementation process and it appears as though it was just not as effective as it should have been. So, we're still trying to make up ground and you don't necessarily know the history, but we started out with one implementation team and that ended up needing to be completely switched out. A new team was assigned to us just because the first team was not effective and then it just didn't all end up coming together as anticipated. So, but, but it is being used on a daily basis to a great extent and there are many aspects of that system that are working well for us right now. So, we are trying to get all the different components online for the citizen self-service and promoting the use of that as well. And I've gotten us behind at this point. The next slide does cover facilities. I am going to go ahead and talk through this. Are you okay, Carrie, if I take a few more minutes?
Yeah.
All right. This is my last slide until we move into the museum request. But this is also significant facility need. So, as I stated, we do have Person Industries merger in our CFP for next year. We feel like that is doable without needing to take on debt. Again, we scaled that plan back and we are optimistic that there is going to be grant funding available from the state to make that move. But what is pressuring us to go ahead and move forward with that project is that the lease is expiring in May of 2025. So, we need to be able to go through a construction process and a move by then. I also talked about the emergency services facility. The next one I do need to get some direction from the board on. So, I just want to give you an update on where we are with our human services facility. Our current lease expires there in August of twenty-five. We have been working for many months now with a broker, Doug Brock, who has been working on negotiations with Bricksmore, who is our landlord for the human services complex. There have been many opportunities for back and forth and counter proposals and we really did feel like we were making some headway. We had some commitments from them to make some major upgrades to the facility in the near term. We were looking at renegotiating the lease with the new beginning date of August of two thousand twenty-three with some of these major improvements incorporated into it. But with the last counter proposal, they reset that lease to say, no, you need to work out the current lease through August of twenty twenty-five and we're not going to implement new lease provisions until a new ten-year lease in August of twenty twenty-five. So, that pushes some of those significant repairs that we thought we were making headway on, particularly with the roof and the HVAC systems out for two and a half years. And that just really does not appear to be meeting our needs and they do not appear to want to invest in the needed improvements in that building for us to be able to continue operations there for the next couple of years. So, there are several things to consider. I mean, we, we, we live with what we have. We continue to work with them. We have improved the process. We now have all of the significant maintenance and repair requests funneling through Ray so that he is aware of all the needs. He's keeping track of what's being done. He's able to communicate those to the company, the leasing company and to our broker. So, we continue to work on it and try to renew the lease August twenty twenty-five and continue to try to get what we need out of that. There's the opportunity to try to negotiate a purchase. Don't really know that that's what we want to do, but that is just an option. Purchasing our part of the building or the entire, most likely, it would be the entire property that they would want to sell rather than divide it up. That doesn't seem very realistic. There are a couple of other opportunities that we have explored in conversations with the broker we've been working with. One would be to identify a developer with whom we could partner to build a new facility in Person County, a new human services facility. And that could be an agreement where we lease from a new landlord in a new facility and we try to negotiate something that is comparable to what we have now. Or maybe it's a lease-to-own arrangement. Another option is that we figure out how to finance a new facility. So, it seems to me at this point, and I welcome any questions and comments from the board, that we need to start looking at those latter two options, looking at the, what does it mean to relocate these services to another facility? Whether that be we find a new landlord or we determine whether or not we build a new facility. In order to do that, we need to go through a bit of a planning process and our broker has recommended an architecture firm who can do that for about three thousand dollars, which we could accomplish within the current budget. Where they would sit down with the, the county tenants, which is DSS, Health, and then we also have Freedom House in the building and Juvenile Justice. So, talk to those four entities about their needs for the future and go ahead and kind of sketch out what that would look like for a new facility. So, I just want to put that out on the table and wanted you all to know kind of where we are with that and find out if there is support for taking that next step to work out a plan, which it may look very similar. The footprint that we have seems to be working pretty well for us, so we don't anticipate that it will be a very involved process to look at what a new facility would need to, how that would need to be laid out. So, but we do want to have those conversations and put a plan on paper so we can use that to inform our next steps.
Do we have a square footage on that footprint that we currently lease?
I can't tell you what that is off the top of my head. I mean, we haven't. I just don't have it committed to memory.
Now, we're just looking at the facilities that we use, not all of these other.
Right, just the left side of the building.
Right.
You know, we, our health and social services take up the majority of that building, but we've also had some kind of space left over. So, we have housed juvenile justice and freedom house there. So, we would also need to assess what that looks like going forward if we were to move into a new facility. Do we continue to accommodate those two functions in that space or do we look at other opportunities? We don't necessarily have to co-locate all four of those together. So, it does offer some flexibility for identifying what that end product looks like.
Two reason I ask that question is, number one, we want it to be centralized to the, the city.
Yes.
And number two, we have a huge building setting up on Main Street that's not been used in twenty years, full of junk, the old Leggits Building. That could be an option to purchase?
Yes, there may be some options for renovating some spaces or some land that is available close to town or within town where we could build something as well. So, we would definitely look at both of those approaches.
Looking at every avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, so my, my concern, like, the number one, renew ten-year lease. I'm concerned about that length of time and I'm also concerned about support we get there for maintenance and issues like that, safety, and I say safety, not just security, but safety of the building, that sort of thing. So, you know, I'm glad you brought it up, but it certainly is something we gotta look at. But I certainly, at this point in time, would not be in favor of a ten-year lease and we do need to look at other options. So, it's my thoughts on that.
And, and one part that we have been negotiating with them would be to pull the maintenance out of the lease agreement going forward. So, when we renegotiate that lease, the maintenance responsibilities become the county responsibilities. That does involve hiring additional staff and additional cost in return for some reduction in the lease amount. But we have looked at that as a potential solution to being able to provide better services there and upkeep.
What was their response to that?
Yeah, that, that was, that was part, part of it. But again, that was something we were looking at potentially doing in the next fiscal year, but now it's two years from now, so.
I agree with Commissioner Sims. I don't, I don't like leases to begin with, but to extend that another ten years with some of the problems that we've got. When I walked through that building, I see maze, that is amazing, it's not amazing. It's unsafe and with the current trends, societal trends, I think it's becoming more of an unsafe facility for, for our staff that's there as well as clients coming to the building. So, I think we've got some decisions to, to make. It's, it's really not an ideal situation as far as office spaces and where our, our employees work and the clients that come into the building. So, I think we need to look at that seriously going down the road.
Is there, in the contract, is there due diligence? We have to give notice that we're no longer renewing the lease with them?
There are some, yes, provisions there. Again, I can't tell you off the top of my head exactly what they are, but we will make sure that we're following those contract provisions and anticipating the timeline for what we need to do next.
The bill is about seventy-two thousand square feet.
Seventy-two thousand?
Our portion of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Of the, the four pieces, yes.
Are we required to have a, I know part of that space is the FEMA shelter as well. Is the county required to have a FEMA shelter in place?
I'd have to look at that. I believe we used some grant funding to construct it for that purpose. So, I'm not sure that that's something that has to continue if we were to move or if there is another site that is suitable for that particular function. That's something that we'll look at.
The square footage may, uh, taken up with Freedom House, is that, does that fall under VA Health?
It is, it is our support for mental health, and I have had some conversations with VIA. So they are running some numbers for us so that we can get a better idea of how that space is being utilized. So that will inform our conversations with Freedom House as we look at whether or not they have needs to continue to occupy that same amount of space or what that may look like going forward.
Well, that's an important discussion because of mental health and that's become extremely important to us locally. And so I would encourage that conversation to continue and maintain it.
We will. So it sounds like the board has an interest in us moving forward with doing that space assessment within the current budget. Okay, we will move forward with that.
I've asked for a report from VIA for Freedom House for the square footage data related to their occupancy there. So I don't know when. Maybe that'll be here in time for you to consider that.
Okay, we had a conversation again about that last week, so I'll follow up and see where that stands.
Good.
That was it for that portion of the presentation. Again, a little behind, but I will be happy to invite Carrie up here to talk about the museum's mid-year budget request. She has her own presentation, so if IT can bring that up. That was just a slide to include her presentation.
Thank you.
Sure. All back.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, wow, it was actually really great to get to sit through that and get a better understanding of what you guys do. So just wanted to say thank you because that's a lot of big decisions that are on your plate. And today I'm here to see if I can ask you to make another decision. It's been really wonderful. I've had the pleasure of meeting with all of the county commissioners individually. And we are coming together now to do a formal request to you for additional support for the museum. And I'm sorry I can't, I'm a mom. My small humans are there. We came here to Person County as visitors in two thousand seventeen, fell in love. Twenty nineteen, I was able to start working here. It's been one of the best things that's ever happened to me. So I'm excited to be standing in front of you today. As we've discussed, we have to find a revenue source to keep the museum viable, to keep the museum open and to keep the museum serving the community. And we have identified opportunities to be able to do that and to move toward the level of self-sustainability that we need. But if we don't make those changes, we could find ourselves in a position where the museum board is no longer able to operate the museum in two to three years just due to funds. So what we are looking for is some assistance on special projects that will allow us to move forward. And one of the things that I heard earlier and one of the things that I talked to you all individually, safety, accessibility, these are all things that we desperately need to address at this facility, which is owned by the county. So here we go. This is what we're asking for in a mid-year request. We are asking for twenty thousand dollars. That's going to let us start on phase one. So what is phase one? Well, that's allowing us to do the capital improvements we need to move toward that self-sustainability. We're going to be able to better serve the community. We're going to have those safety measures in place and begin the revenue generation that I pointed out to you guys at the Long House. That is an amazing structure right in uptown, has the potential to bring in income and to offer an opportunity for Person County residents to celebrate and host events here in town, keeping things local and in just a little bit of a different venue. So before I move forward on that, because I'm really trying to not take a lot of your time, are there any questions about this particular request?
The total request?
This, the mid-year.
The first phase.
The first phase, yes.
Yes, I have one. What is the museum's current budget reserve amount?
So currently we have, sorry, I'm doing math in my head, which I'm not typically allowed to do, so bear with me. In our absolute every dollar that we have, our current budget reserve is about a year and a half to two years.
Are we still sending out membership?
Yes.
I haven't gotten one.
You haven't gotten one yet, that is going out March first. We recognize that because the model that we're looking at, because of the way we want to operate in the community, we wanted to sort of look at how we're requesting funding from individuals in the community and sort of realign that to an annual fund versus a membership. So I actually have a meeting, what is today, Thursday, and we're hammering that out. So everybody keep your eye on your mailboxes. You will be getting mail from us within the next few weeks for that individual support request.
I'm thinking it's been two or three years since I've gotten a.
We did not get one out last year. We did do the two years prior. So last year, as you may be aware, we had a bit of a staffing change where I actually did leave the museum because I had to pursue a full-time position in order to support my family. And then thankfully, the museum board was able to rally together, and they've now brought me on board full-time as the executive director, and I'm able to do what my family needs while still meet the needs of the museum. So we were delayed in that membership request, which is also why we're trying to get it out earlier. Normally it goes out in October, but we're going to do a march. We're going to march right on into the future with hopefully lots of community support.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Carrie, I remember a while back, well, how long has it been now? There was a fundraising project where we used bricks and people could, in memory of?
Yes.
And I don't know how much that generated, but what, you know, again, is there another spot for the bricks to go and you can ask for that? Or where are you at with that?
Yes, so we actually still do that project. That is our memorial bricks. I don't know exactly how many we have left, but we do have room, I would say, for probably two or three more cycles of that as a fundraiser. That will be part of the mailing that you will get in your envelopes because unfortunately, we're going to have to slightly raise the rates on that just due to the increase in the cost of goods. But that is still happening. We have that as a fundraising opportunity. We have a lot of other fundraising opportunities as well that we're pursuing because the request that we're asking for, that's not really touching our budget. That's touching the things that we have to do to be able to generate income. Our fundraising opportunities are what are addressing our actual budgetary needs.
So the twenty thousand you have that you're asking for, that is just for one year, correct?
The twenty thousand right now is for this fiscal year, and yes, that is just for one year. The ask that we're going to have for moving forward into the next budget cycle is also for that year. The hope is, not the hope, the goal and what we will be able to accomplish, putting the positivity out there, is that once we're able to be more active and be more important to the community, to be part of what you just think of, of course, we're going to do things at the museum, we're going to participate in things at the museum. The museum is an important part of our lives, of our community, and what we're doing is of value. We do see this need that we have decreasing preferably exponentially year over year. It's just the opportunity to get over the hump and get things where they need to be. You know, I did point out, some of the things are just no-bringers that I imagine anyone would imagine, like our door locking situation that we have going on. But these are special project asks, this isn't an ongoing.
So again, with the twenty thousand that we're asking, you're asking, when would that go into effect?
Well, they're requesting it for this fiscal year, so it'd require an additional allocation to the museum in fiscal year twenty-three. That's why it's a mid-year.
So this is not going to be part, this is not part of our budget that we are?
That is the next slide.
Oh, okay.
Here we go.
Carrie, is that, is that slide, that's a consolidation of my, on our screen here, I see a different slide.
Yes, we consolidated just because I talk a lot and I know we only had ten minutes. So, yes, on your packets, you got the complete packet with the full itemized detail.
Are you going to talk about going forward a little bit about sustainability?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So the question that everybody has, and I can kind of move forward into this, this way. What are we doing with this money and how are we going to be able to sustain? So with a cultural institution like the museum, we face the same challenges that all the other cultural institutions have, like how the Kirby would operate, how the library, you know, offers services for free. But we're trying to find a way to utilize the asset that we have in order to generate funds. So that is where using the Long House, which colloquially is known as the Woody House, as a site rental location is what is going to allow us to generate funds. The wedding industry is huge. We have a beautiful building that is uniquely suited for that type of opportunity. And we feel like that, that, once we get some of those infrastructure things in place as far as the lighting and the safety and that sort of thing, that's where we're going to be able to make our money. I mean, one weekend alone, and I'm sorry, I'm doing this off the top of my head, so bear with me on that. But one weekend event alone, you could be looking at upwards of a twenty-five hundred dollar income from just one wedding weekend. You know, if you look at that over the course of a year, once we get going, once we're able to do that on a regular basis, that's where that income is going to come from. That's where, that's going to take a little bit of the pressure off. But let's be clear, we're always going to have to fundraise for the museum. That is never going to change. And in order to continue to see that fundraising go up, we have to address how people view the museum and its importance to the community and to their lives.
What's your goal as far as membership?
Membership.
Membership income?
I would like to raise twenty thousand dollars this year. That is my goal for our annual fund drive. And then additional fundraisers would bring in somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty to twenty-five thousand more. Our fundraising goal outside of these requests is forty to forty-five thousand for this year. So we understand, we're not coming to say we need county support to take care of everything. That's not what we're looking for. We understand that as an institution and as an organization, we have a responsibility to do that. And that this is just our, our attempt to do that because, I mean, it's just amazing. You know, I've traveled around, I've gone to a lot of places, and what's here in the county with this museum, it's unique, it's a gem, and it's underutilized. And it has the opportunity to do so much, both in the community and to serve as a way to bring in tourism dollars. We just desperately need the help to get there.
Going back to your previous slide, if you can.
Which one?
The one where it was forty thousand?
Yes.
Or something like that?
Yes.
That would be for twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the twenty, so basically sixty thousand dollars is what you're asking?
Over the eighteen months, yes.
Over the eighteen months. And with that, everything you've got there, that will take care, will that take care of the Woody House?
Yes. So ideally, I mean, I've talked to you guys, you know I have very big ideas. But yes, from an, from an actual functionality standpoint, the Woody House should be up and running. I mean, if we decide to move forward, I will say one of the issues we have is parking. And I'm not going to lie, that's something I have to figure out, the cost of that and adding that. But we have some work to do with the city as far as permitting, to understand what our options are. But yes, we will be up and running with that and ideally really be moving toward whole campus accessibility with this second phase of the funding. So if you look at the campus, we have these fabulous buildings, like the general store and the doctor's office. If you can't walk upstairs, you can't get in them. There's no ramp, there's no, any opportunity to enter those spaces. And so that's what this funding is also looking to support. And then the Parsonage, that is the building, if you're looking at the museum to the right, that is the building that we are really hoping to utilize for some more youth programming and children's programming. We have fantastic ideas about how to create an opportunity for young children and young families to come and interact with history. I had toddlers at one point and was always looking for things to do, and I'm not aware of another option here in the county. So let's utilize the museum, let's make that a free service available to them so that they can come in and start catching the history bug. So that's what that funding will do.
Commissioner Kathy, any of those things could be rolled into county operational expenses under the umbrella of our insurance carrier? Or any of those things that would not become a recurring expense to the museum?
Well, so we currently insure the exterior. Your, this particular insurance cost is for the contents of the building.
For the art, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's something that we could explore. I'm not sure, you know, why that's been carved out, but you may have a different type of insurance coverage than, than we have through the.
Carrie, is that a request from your donors? I mean, I've.
Is, I beg your pardon?
Insurance of the contents, is that something your donors are requesting?
It's industry standard, to be honest. I've worked with a number of museums and you just always have coverage on your contents. It's kind of like if you rent, I mean, the way you look, if you're a homeowner, the contents of your home is covered under homeowner's insurance. Because we don't own the building, it's basically where renters insurance. So if there were a flood, if there were a fire and we needed to go out and purchase the items to replace what we lost, that's what that insurance is covering.
Well, some of the, some of the antiques and historical items in there, you can't replace them?
You can't, you can't. But you, you do have the opportunity to get items that can also interpret. I can do more research on that, to be honest. It's just my experience in institutions. And that cost, if I'm remembering correctly, I believe the insurance is somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-one hundred dollars a year.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just had one question. If the request is approved, how, what type of reports will you, how often would you send reports of the progress of these stages and to know that your plan is working?
Well, my first answer would be as often as you would like. But I kind of look at this request in the same way that I would look at a grant request, in that you have to keep meticulous records for a grant because they're expecting you to account for every penny. It could be monthly, it could be weekly, if you so choose. I don't know if that would be a direction you would want to go. But it's important that as stores of any funds were given, we make sure we're exceptionally transparent in how that money is being spent and how the project is progressing.
Piggybacking a little bit on what Commissioner Poggi was saying, with the investment that we're putting in, I think certainly we'd like to know the increase in attendance, people actually visiting.
Yes.
The museum. And I think that's certainly with the improvements you're talking about, we should see, I think. we should see, uh, uh, I think, uh, increase in visitors to the museum. And, um, 'cause that would be something that I think as taxpayers, we look at and say, you know, what are we getting for this money? Uh, not only do I want to keep it open, the museum open, uh, but at the same time, people who are gonna say, well, what are we, what are we getting with this? And are we seeing that type of improvement? So, uh, that's just my thoughts on that, and that's all I will say.
Absolutely. I think it's important, I mean, I kind of think of it as a return on your investment. Um, and I'm a data nerd as well, so having that information is really helpful for us. And it helps us figure out if what we're offering is what the community's looking for. Um, so I think that if we were talking about reporting and whatnot, that would be part of the reporting structure, um, on whatever schedule you guys would be looking for in that attendance.
Catherine, do we have other nonprofits that we are supporting with, in this, in this way? Or we could be?
Not in this, um, exact way. You have an example of giving some funding, uh, in the last year to support a new nonprofit coming, um, to Person County. What we would need to do if the board were to decide to go in this direction is to create a formal agreement, um, with the museum, which would outline, um, the amount of funding that's approved and the expectations for that. It would include reporting requirements. We'd make sure our attorney has reviewed that. And that is something that the board would have to approve before allocating the money, um, to the museum. We would need a formal agreement in order to fund them as an organization that is providing a service that the county could otherwise provide. It's something within our purview to provide.
And that could be a defined timeline, specific timelines, somewhere that you would, a year or two or whatever?
I feel like I got a little off. So, but do you, basically, do you have other questions? Do you have?
Given the time-sensitive issue of the museum financials, when do you need a decision from this board?
Um, well, understanding that the forty thousand dollar request would just be part of your normal process. Um, for the twenty thousand dollar request, um, I mean, the short answer is always as soon as possible. The long answer is if we could know within, and I'm looking to the vice president of the board right now, um, who's sitting behind us, hello, Michael. Um, if possible, within a month. Um, the, what we're looking at with the, the starting this revenue generation is that we're getting into event season. So the sooner we can get that long house ready to go, the sooner we can start making money. Uh, the sooner I can get, um, the parsonage going, the sooner I can get a children's space. So it's also about what the timeline is for the board and when you would like to see these positive changes start happening at the museum and in the community.
Ms. Carrie?
Yes, sir.
Um, that bottom line figure we're looking at, this includes all three major structures and the whole entire campus, correct?
It, it does. Um, I'm not gonna say there's never going to be anything else that needs to be done.
Right, right, I'm, I'm just talking about currently.
But, um, yes, these, the first, gave me a remote, gave me power. Um, the first one is much more focused on the Long Woody House. So this, um, and then the campus as a whole. Um, this one is going to touch all of those buildings. Um, particularly, we're excited to get that general store back open by the end of the year. I would love to see a handicap ramp on that building by that time. Um, so that when we open it to the public, we open it to the entire public, um, not just those who can walk up the stairs. So that's what those, um, those funds will be taking care of.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. What I want to.
Questions, anyone else? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I don't wanna take any more of your time.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, this board just needs to decide what direction we want to go with this item. And provide, if there's, if we do want to move forward with requests, it sounds like it is time-sensitive and, um, provide guidance to the county manager to prepare some type of agreement if this board is in favor of such.
Yeah, which would be possibly, potentially, an agenda item next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you've done there.
Absolutely. It's a, it's a pleasure.
Beautiful location. And I'm listening to you and, uh, I'm part of Person County history. I believe there are more than any two of you in here. Been around here a long time. And my favorite channel on TV, if I ever get control of the remote, is the History Channel. I love it. And, uh, so it's an important part of, uh, Person County and going forward. And thank you for the improvements you've done there, and it may, it's very inviting. And I can, I can see where, I can see your passion for what you're doing, and we certainly do appreciate that. And I think this board will, uh, take your, your request and, uh, in the future of that, uh, in very seriously. So, we'll be in touch.
Wonderful, I appreciate it. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next item would be, um, item setting board priorities and strategic planning.
We got Charters of Freedom.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about Charters of Freedom, that finishes out.
On my iPad here.
The mid-year request. Um, so going back to this twenty thousand dollar request from the museum, um, where we previously talked about this, we do have just over twenty thousand dollars remaining in our contingency line item. So that's a potential source of funding in this fiscal year. That's how the board would like to utilize that. So we could bring forth a budget amendment and an agreement at our next meeting. So Charters of Freedom, speaking of history, um, we left this discussion off last with some estimated cost for various components, um, for creating, um, this space for this setting at Huck Sands Berry. So I did wanna circle back around, uh, to that. The board had requested in the last discussion about looking for opportunities for, um, reducing the estimated cost for this particular, um, park component, um, possibly utilizing some donated time and materials. So I have had some discussions with board members who have some contacts that they would be glad to approach if the board decides to proceed, um, with this project. Um, John Hill has also reached out and does have some interest, um, from some volunteers and donated time on, um, making this happen. So I do believe, you know, that we can accomplish quite a bit, um, without needing to contract, um, for the entire project. Um, in addition, we have interest from a local group that may provide some funding. So I just wanted to find out from the board if you would like to go ahead and, uh, proceed in this fiscal year. If that's the case, I would recommend establishing a small budget and also, um, letting me know which components would you like for us to focus on? We know we're gonna have the site prep piece. Um, and then we would have, um, Charters of Freedom would come out and they would install those, um, the settings. Then we're gonna come back with, um, the, laying the, um, cement to create an accessible area. But there are some optional pieces to this, you know, whether or not we are to run electricity to it. Um, electricity could potentially, um, power LED lighting that would be within the cases so that they could be read, um, in low light conditions. If you were to want to install a flagpole, which again, we could move forward with if we got a donation to support, then you might want to light that. Um, and then the other, um, components might be some landscaping or benches, you know, eventually. But we can, uh, go the course of trying to, you know, get some, uh, contributions, some, uh, u- utilize some internal staff labor towards that, um, as well as some volunteer time. But would also, you know, need to invest in some of the materials, primarily the concrete work, um, would be the most important piece to get it ready, um, for visitors right off the bat. So I just wanna find out what the level of interest is in the board in proceeding.
If I'm looking at this, are we saying for the county, our cost is gonna be forty-four thousand dollars?
That was the original estimate for all of those various components and using contractors to prepare the site, um, and then in order to restore it back, um, in the end, to make it accessible. And then to add the landscaping components, do a flagpole, electricity, all of that.
Yep, got it. And we, um, the company that we were dealing with at the time when they made this presentation to us, if I'm not mistaken, it was, and it's gonna be free, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, that was, that's what, that's what was discussed.
Foundation Forward has offered it as a gift to the county. And, um, the gift portion are the three settings. Um, they would like for us to do some fundraising. They're now saying that that is not an expectation. But fundraising could, um, be to install those pavers in the front, if people were to purchase those. Um, they also would put, um, a plaque to the side that may have some names on it if people or organizations were to donate to the project. But there are definite expenses associated on the county end. Um, the ones that absolutely have to happen are the site prep work, which involves, um, pulling up some of the sidewalk that's there, relocating the signage, relocating a small monument that's there now, grading it, getting it ready. Um, and then making sure that the end product is accessible to the public. Those would be the basic.
And the continuing maintenance.
Yes.
Years after years on this project will be county expense as well.
Right.
I've always liked the concept. I think it's a good teaching tool, so to speak. Those documents to, um, be displayed are important to our history and, and, uh, and a good place for our children to go and, and observe. I've been a little miffed at, uh, Charters of Freedom originally saying that this will not cost the county anything. Well, that, that was a little bit to me misleading because I took it for, uh, word of mouth that was gonna be the case. However, I don't have any opposition to seeking out, um, contributions. And I think we could get that. But if we could break those down into specific categories, then us, whomever, we could go to, uh, various businesses and, and make some requests, some specific clubs may wanna, um, take part in some of the landscape or, uh, an electrical contractor, which, uh, power is not very far from that site. It's just a matter of feet. Uh, don't wanna discount their contribution at all. But if we could get some, how many yards of concrete do we need? How mu- much lighting? We're gonna have to purchase lights. They aren't already in housed in those, um, displays. So we're gonna have to break that down into specific categories and then we can get out and solicit some funds. I think the county and the business people in the county will support it. But, um, I have no problem going forward with it. We just need to tie all those loose ends where, uh, there were some misconceptions in the beginning that we, uh, really were totally unaware of. I like the word free, but, uh, it didn't turn out that way. But now that we know, again, tie the loose ends and proceed with it. I don't, I'm fine with that.
And, and that's a good point that I also want to reiterate that, um, there will be staff time involved in this. So we wanna make sure that this is a priority for the board before we invest more staff time in it. But if the board does want to proceed, um, we will likely need to assign this project, um, to a department and have a lead person identified. Uh, it would most likely be within the Recreation Arts and Parks Department since it's, since it is part of Huck Sands Berry and within the realm of what they do with assistance from General Services. Um, so at that point, staff could create a more detailed plan about what will be needed to accomplish this project.
Does it need an official vote or consensus around the table here? I mean, we, I don't know what, about the feelings are.
My, my concerns, you know, what we're saying, uh, we say, okay, let's go and go with the project, but we don't know how much it's gonna cost us.
Well, see, that's, that's part of what you're gonna have to do.
And I think that I would like to know how much it's gonna cost us before I go and say, oh, yeah, let's go ahead and, and approve and vote on it. That's my opinion.
And, and one approach you could take would be to establish a, a small budget for it. Say you want to try to accomplish this within a five thousand dollar budget. And we allocate staff time and some staff resources to it. We seek donations and we seek, um, you know, other, other external support, labor, supplies. Um, at some point, we have to sign a letter of intent with the Charters of Freedom and at that, or with the Foundation Forward organization. At that point, we are committing to doing it. So, um, you know, there, and there's different degrees to that. We commit to something basic and we go ahead and move forward with it, or we decide we will go ahead and, and cost out the various components and go out and spend time talking and, uh, working on the donation piece so that we can, um, hone in on that before making a final decision. So it's, it's really up to the board. But, um, once we sign that letter of content, or intent, we're pretty much, uh, committed to.
Are we able to send out RFPs to bidders to get an, um, an actual estimate of what, you know, what this is gonna cost, even if we're not committed to the project yet?
It is a, it's a fairly small project to go through a formal bidding process. Um, John has reached out to vendors to get quotes, but it has not been through a competitive process. But it is, again, something that we could work on refining and supplementing it with other, um, other types of support to cut down on those. And the initial quote was, if we contract all of this out and we have all these components as part of this project, it could, again, rough estimate, amount to that much.
So he already knows some of the things I mentioned a bit ago about electrical, uh, concrete or?
Well, we had estimated the cost for each component of that when we initially came to the board. Uh, but he has talked with someone who potentially could work with us on the, the labor part of putting the concrete back. Um, we'd still need to, uh, purchase the materials in that particular.
Or get a donation.
Right, yeah, exactly. There may be a donation secured.
Now, what, what was the part there that they requested? We, um, sort of form a committee to.
Yes, so.
Solicit funds to cover their cost? That's where I, I little bit of a line in saying that I don't.
So that was initially how they presented it to us, that typically there's a, a committee, oftentimes a citizen committee that does fundraising. Foundation Forward says they have the funds to do this project currently. Um, any, the fundraising that this committee would do would basically go back into the Foundation Forward budget so that they could do other projects and benefit other communities. Um, they are now saying that that is not a requirement for us to have a citizen committee, but they do want to have an identified point of contact on staff. And then we also will be responsible for planning the kind of opening cer- the dedication ceremony, um, when it comes time to that. So that's oftentimes a function of that committee as well.
But, um.
Chairman, uh, my comment, I, I think, could this be put on our agenda for our next meeting? And the reason I say that is, I wasn't even under the impression we'd be voting on anything today.
No, I, I asked for potentially consensus agreement here to, to go forward, but no, it's, it's.
So would you like us at the next board meeting to kind of hone in on? You know, we, we, we can get it possibly down to this and then ask you to prioritize some of the features for moving forward?
If we could get several options, just like before. Have one where it's just a very basic.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, 'cause you said they came in and they, they told you in the beginning it was free and then, then you put in, they want us to fundraise for that free part? I mean, it's just.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's just, I would like options and I would like a very basic, basic option.
Yes, so, so as they've said, you can set those, set, put the settings on grass. But we believe that it would be in order to make them accessible to the public, having the concrete.
But if you add electricity, you're adding extra cost coming in year after year.
That's why I say a lot of these loose ends and if we wanna put that as an agenda item.
So there's interest in continuing to consider it and we will refine and create few different options for your consideration.
And so I understand there will be a one, if we agree on this, it would be parts and wrecks project that they would be having census at Huck Sandsbury. I would like to see, have some discussion as to what type of fundraising efforts that they have in mind to help off, offset some of the costs with that as well.
Okay, um, and, and we'd have to determine where that would be cited. I mean, generally, we would have a, staff would not go out and fundraise for a park. So whether or not we, uh, put together a citizen committee to do that, um, that's one option. If we were to work with the Recreation Advisory Board and see if that's something that, that they could support. You know, that, that is another group, um, of volunteers that could potentially be involved.
Well, John's not here, so we'll put it on him.
Well, we'll sketch out what that could look like, okay?
Uh, I do have a couple of items here. When we first was presented this, uh, we got a follow-up email. And I offered right off the bat to write a check for two thousand dollars on my part. The offer still stands. As far as the glass, do we know is it unbreakable?
I, I don't know if it's un- they describe it in the letter of intent.
It should be.
Theoretically, because they said the structure is designed to last three hundred years.
Yeah, but I mean.
I don't think I'll be here, but. But, yeah, it's supposed to be, um.
So it's unbreakable glass, supposedly.
That's what, what I heard from them.
Cause I think that's detrimental.
The specifications were in that presentation that they did.
Okay.
And, and they did provide some details of the glass. I just.
Just, just make a note that I've got two thousand dollars I'm ready to write a check for.
All right, thanks, Charlie.
And I'm gonna help with, with the building of it.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Well, we are not gonna spend as much time as we originally allocated since we, um, are not gonna keep you here while past lunch. So the next segment of our meeting is focused on board priorities and strategic planning. So what I want to do is revisit the priorities that the board has focused on for the last couple of years and talk some about a strategic planning process. Um, one of the, the goals, um, that I worked with you all on setting for me when I came into the manager's role was to initiate a strategic planning process. So we'll talk some about the history of that and what that might look like going forward. So for the last two fiscal years, so two years ago at your retreat, um, the board agreed on five priorities for the budget process and then reconfirm those one year ago. So those five priorities are improving the economic development process, supporting the airport, improving broadband connectivity, keeping the tax rate flat, and improving school facilities. So those are very, um, general statements of the board's interest in those various, um, topics when it comes to the budget. So keeping those in mind through the funding mechanism of the budget, improving the economic development process, supporting the airport, improving broadband, keeping the tax rate flat, and improving school facilities. So we're gonna talk through this a little bit more and then revisit, have these priorities changed for the upcoming budget process. So the last time we did a strategic planning process was, um, creating a plan that was for the two thousand ten, fifteen timeframe. So it's been quite a while since that actual strategic plan has been updated. Generally, a strategic plan is going to include various components, to include a vision statement, mission statement, goals, objectives, and priorities. So in this particular plan, the board had adopted a plan that focused on five different areas and actually created these components for each of those five areas. So we came back with five mission statements, five mission statements. So the priorities in our last strategic planning process focused on protecting our land, fostering a sense of community, encouraging learning for life and lifelong learning, reimagining our county for a better future, and prospering to, by developing the new economy locally. So many of those may still apply today and relate to the other priorities. But I just wanna revisit kind of where we were with that last strategic planning process. A strategic plan is created, um, to be used for a variety of different purposes. But one of its main, uh, uses is an accountability tool. So if the board goes through the process of identifying the vision for what we look like in the future, what is the mission of county government, setting the goals and the priorities, and communicating those to the citizens, then it's accountability tool for you. It helps guide your decision-making. It becomes an accountability tool for staff as well to guide our work. So it charts out a plan for how we approach our work going forward and what the established expectations are, what are the outcomes we're looking for. When you have a strategic plan in place, you are using that as a communication tool for the public. So the public knows why we exist as a county government, what we're doing and what we're working towards. Um, and it also helps staff throughout the organization see how their individual roles contribute to achieving that overall vision for Person County Government. So it helps everybody identify with the mission of the organization and work towards common goals. And it's used as a prioritat- prioritization tool. So if you've identified within a strategic plan what your focus areas are, what your top priorities are, then when it comes time to making decisions during the budget process or throughout the year, you can look back and say, does this align with that strategic plan that we have put in place? And it is important to, um, update it periodically and not put it on a shelf. So I would say at this time, it's a good time for us to update what we have, um, currently because it has been a while since we've looked at that. So these are the different parts of a strategic plan. And you can see how this goes beyond the, um, establishing the five goals that we've talked about over the last couple of years. Um, as far as a mission goes, it's what do we do today? Um, it communicates to residents what to expect, what we do on a day-to-day basis. The vision looks towards the future. What do we want Person County to look like in ten to fifteen years? So this is something that you create together. It's something that we keep in mind, that our staff keeps in mind and helps guide our decision-making. Looking at values, that has become an important part of the strategic plan. So identifying what are those values that are important to you as the elected officials in Person County? Um, what values do we feel are representative of our community and should guide the decisions that we make? Again, these also help employees to understand what's expected of them and what they should be thoughtful about when they are making decisions and delivering services to the public. Then, of course, um, establishing goals, which again can be revisited and measured on a regular basis, reported out on, um, and that helps us achieve that vision that's established. And the strategies become more specific in outlining specific steps that we're going to take to achieve those goals. And those are usually, um, implemented with a one to two-year timeline and specific steps that we will take. So right now, we have, um, the five vision statements that I referenced, um, in the futures plan. So with a strategic planning process, I would recommend that we focus in on creating that one cohesive vision for Person County and how we look towards the future. A strategic planning process, um, first starts with the board committing to following a process, recognizing the value of getting a strategic plan in place or updating the one that we have so that we can utilize that again as the communication and accountability and planning tool, um, moving forward. So you may, um, direct some staff members to be the primary contacts on, or, uh, yes, so primary, uh, committee members for bringing this plan to fruition. Two or three, um, may be, uh, reasonable within our sized organization. There may be a community input part of this process. And that could be done in a variety of different ways, whether that be in a meeting format, a retreat format, a survey format. Um, it's not a required part of the process, but might help you inform, um, strategic plan development. And we would have you conduct, um, what's on this slide is a SWAC analysis. You've probably heard of SWOT analysis, but looking at our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges. So really identifying what are those for us as a county. And again, I feel like this is, becomes even more important in our current, um, state where we have so many uncertainties. So we identify those. We put those on the table. We keep those, you know, as part of the decision-making process. So we identify those as challenges for us as we move forward. And we make sure that we are, um, keeping those in mind as we make decisions. So, um, we could have another retreat similar to this to get started on creating a strategic plan. So you get away from it, you devote several hours, we go through multiple steps and we start formulating it. Or you could take the approach to just kind of work on it bit by bit. Maybe at the day meetings, we carve out, you know, a twenty-minute segment of the meeting to focus in on a certain component of the strategic plan and just work towards that over several months so that we can get something in place early in the fiscal year to guide the next budget process. So that is also something that the board could consider as far as how we could develop a strategic plan. Um, but we put those components together and we draft a report. We can put a draft out to the community and get some feedback. You, of course, would have the opportunity to review that and then it could be finalized. And we would make sure that it's shared on a regular basis and that we have, um, the, uh, plan in place for how we keep it up to date and how we report out on it regularly as far as our process, our progress on the strategic plan. So now I want to the process, um, let's see. I've just got a few examples of how this could look in the end as a finished project. This is an example from Davie County where they, um, have created, uh, their values, a vision, vision and a mission. So those would be components that we would be, um, looking at doing. So they start out there as consistent with our, um, fundamental beliefs that guide our behavior and actions. Davie County is committed to these shared core values and it's I-led. And so again, that is a, a way for our employees to, to be able to, um, make sure these values are, um, incorporated into their daily work. It becomes a guiding document. This is another example. This is from Roseville, North Carolina. So they have created four major focus areas for goals. And then, um, they have further, uh, documentation that expands those out into specific strategies. But this just shows what they are focused on, um, on behalf of the community. And then this is an example from Brunswick County, which shows how the strategic plan gets connected to actual outcomes, um, for you to expect. So you start with the overall plan with the mission and vision, you create goals and then those objectives. And then you have, um, various levels of detail that come down from those that translate into the action that you see in terms of service delivery and decisions made. So it's a quick, um, overview of what a strategic planning process would look like and what the end result would be that we would be looking for. Again, it's similar to, uh, what we've done in the past. And it is, again, to create an updated version of what, um, we would be striving for as a county government and our presence in the community and communicating that out. So I just want to see if you have any questions about that process that I can answer today. Any other comments? Find out if there is an interest from the board in moving forward with the strategic planning process? And if you'd like to commit to doing a retreat or get it started kind of in an incremental way over some, um, upcoming meetings?
This initially was started when?
Well, we do have a Person Futures Plan in place. Um, and that, the last timeframe that that covered was two thousand ten to fifteen. That's the last concrete example we have of a strategic planning effort. We've had some similar things take place more on a departmental level. We've worked with the city to create the Joint Comprehensive Land Use Plan. That is a planning document that also, um, has guiding principles and communicates community values. We have master planning happening in Recreation Arts and Parks. We do planning for transportation. But this would be looking at, uh, the approach from the view of what county government, um, does in total in terms of service provision.
Catherine, I just wanna go back, uh, I'm gonna go back on the start slides. But I was looking at, uh, as you were going through what are the board commissioners' goals. And as you read those, I check off my list about improving economic development, which we have worked on that and, and funded, uh, supporting the airport. We've done that. That's another check on the list. Uh, improving broadband connectivity, we have worked on that. We've got grants out there and we put money aside for broadband on that. Keeping the tax rate flat. I think we did a pretty good job as low, as flat as we could keep it. And improving school facilities. That's what we're discussing here today. So all of these are goals that we set back in twenty-two, twenty-three goals. And I think we have, when we've accomplished everything, no, but we have checked off the list on the things we've focused on, uh, in the past year, I would say, or, or two years.
Mm-hmm.
So I just wanted to say that because as I was going through that, I was checking off. And that's, I remember when we did this project way back and put what our goals were.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and I just remember us doing that. And so, anyway.
We've definitely made progress.
Yes.
I think we still fall in line with where we were upon the implementation of this, uh, direction. I don't know that we need to change anything. Nothing comes to mind.
Certainly don't wanna give up on any of, uh, going forward. I agree with, I think we all agree with, uh, what we're doing. We're headed in the right direction. We do have, um, challenges. Need to work on those. And, uh, the old cliche, if you, if you don't plan, you're playing, uh, to fail. And we, we certainly don't wanna do that. But, uh, we've got some good projects going, some evolving projects, even a discussion later today on. So I mean, it's current, it's fluid and we wanna keep those things going. And, um, so I think within the realm of our expertise and available, uh, resources, I think we, we're doing a pretty good job. We certainly don't want to take our foot off the pedal and put it on, well, the, the gas pedal and put it on the brake pedal, so to speak. We don't wanna, don't wanna slow down, keep, keep going forward. And I don't know, excuse me.
Oh, no, no, go ahead, Catherine.
Uh, I don't know about, uh, going forward if we want to have this discussion incrementally. I mean, I'm not opposed to a meeting such as this to go forward, but we've got a lot of things on the calendar, uh, for the coming days. And I don't, I don't know if you wanna commit to another half-day for this. I mean, if it's, I'm okay with it, I'll.
And if we were to do a retreat, we could do that, you know, in the new fiscal year. It doesn't necessarily have to be scheduled between now and the end of this fiscal year. But I think it would be wise if we do want to move forward with the strategic planning process that we set that up, uh, with a timeline to where we could have something in place to inform our next budget process. Not realistic to finalize something for this budget process.
I was looking at Department Tactis and KPS. So do we use that now in evaluating any of our departments with the county?
We set objectives through the budget process. In the budget document, you will see objectives, that goals and objectives that our departments have set and we revisit those each year. We do not have a formal process of evaluating progress towards those.
Questions of Manager Kathy?
I would say if we do decide to pursue this, I think having a separate, a separate half-day as opposed to just tagging it on to an end-of-a-day meeting because by the time those meetings are over, you know, we're, we're probably fresh out of ideas. So I think it's good to, if you're going to have one.
We could.
Make a, make it, maybe it could be an afternoon session. It could be, you know, something in the upcoming fiscal year. Not opposed to it at all, but I think that's, just I think instead of doing it periodically, just dedicate an afternoon to it.
If you dedicate it, then you're, that's all you're going to do, that's all you're going to talk about. So we won't go down the many rabbit paths and so I, I think it'll be a good. We can go ahead and make some plans in that direction then.
We can plan for that. I do want to revisit the part about the school facilities and the discussion earlier today. We had indicated that it would be important for the board to make a decision about funding, potentially funding some of the school system request. The, the high school project is definitely pressing. So just wanted to see what the board has an interest in staff bringing back, potentially on, on March sixth. If you have some direction for us to, it would be potentially in the form of a resolution to support moving forward so that they would have a, a decision to guide their actions and, and staff's actions.
With that resolution, you're going to need to know what option this board will support for you to move forward with it, correct?
We will primarily need to know if the board is supportive of moving forward with the, the first option, funding the high school project. The board could then, you could give us some direction as far as if you have an interest in revising the remainder of that thirty-eight million dollars, you know, once we have some more information, if you're ready to go ahead and commit to that, that is also an option or something in between.
Well, I mean, you know, it is an upcoming item. I feel it's appropriate for this board to have some discussion around those, around those options if, if members deem it appropriate.
I think it certainly is. It's of great value. As I said earlier, school facilities are mandated. That's a mandate on, on this board for our county. And I think we're somewhat in the position that we are today due to lack of action with previous boards. Don't mind, don't mean to throw anyone under the bus, but when you, you put off needed projects through the years and they, they grow, they worsen. And so I think for the last several years, this board has been very supportive of our schools. And I'm very happy, very proud of that, but we need to move forward with it. So I think we need to have that discussion.
Okay. Prepare that as an agenda item for March sixth and make sure that we have the draft resolution that the board could consider at that time that could fit with a decision that you make that night. So you have some more time to consider the options and how you might look to approach that. Again, feel free to contact me or Amy with any questions that might come to mind between now and then related to what you heard today. So, you know, the, the keeping the tax rate flat, it sounds to me like there's an interest in minimizing any increase. I know there's been some discussion today in, in our joint meeting about options that could be a quarter cent or a half-cent increase. So is the keeping the tax rate flat really zero? Or is the intent there to keep it, to keep any tax increase to a, a minimum and ensure that we have very sound reasoning as to why, you know, that's going to be capturing our top priorities if we were to raise the tax rate?
Are you asking that question, ma'am?
I am asking that question just because we're looking at priorities. So are we keeping, because I need to know from a budgeting perspective, you know, are you really steadfastly keeping the tax rate flat?
I'm not sure we're all on the same page, but I can, because my opinion is, I'm not going to say here today that I want to raise taxes versus.
But that you will entertain potentially.
I looked at the options and we'll certainly look at the options, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say here today and tell you that I'm in support of, of raising taxes.
Right, and that's, that's not what I'm asking. I'm thinking more, you know, is that you want only a manager's recommended budget that is a, a zero, that, that keeps the tax rate flat? Or, you know, I, I, I'm just asking for some direction. And, and one possible approach to that is we create a budget that keeps the tax rate flat and then we say, well, there are some things we couldn't work into that and this is what you could potentially do with a small increase. That's what I was trying to gauge and it, it probably has more to do with the school system's request than anything as far as potentially entertaining some form of increase.
Well, it's, it's going to be a question that we're going to have to address on it. And, and, you know, and, and the county manager is right. She does need some guidance as to what we, whether we give that guidance to her today or we give that guidance at a, at a, at a future meeting. It does need to be addressed and the school system is a key, a key factor involving that as well, so.
At, at what point in time do you actually start raising your taxes? I mean, we've been kicking this around for how many years? I'm not in, in opposition to giving a quarter or a half percentage or whatever the, the percentages were, number one, number two. I like number two option. Like number three option. This is something that's got to be addressed now, like I say, we've got to address this. Got to.
I'm not, I'm like everybody else. I'm not in favor in particular of a tax increase.
Nobody is.
And no one, no one is. But again, we have to face reality and, and take the bull by the horn because we've got a big bull there with school requests, as I said earlier, due to interaction with previous boards. And we go back to the mandate that we, we have here. I like what's laid out here in the way of options and I can be middle of the road there. Again, I'm not suggesting anything, but when I look at a quarter cent and a half cent, I see it as minimal for, for some significant advantages with, within the system and that being the school system. So I, again, I'm not so much totally in favor of and I'm not totally opposed to either, but certainly will consider. The difference between a quarter and a half penny, the bottom line end result is pretty significant. And, and not a great deal of hardship, I, I don't believe on our citizens, but I don't know if that's, if we answered your question or not.
Yes, thank you. And, and we'll, we'll continue the, the school system-specific discussion at the next meeting. So I am hearing that these are still, these priorities still resonate with the board. Is there anything that is not on that list that you would want to, to add to make sure that we have on our radar as we approach the budgeting process? Of course, there are many others, but, you know, we will consider these at the top of the list.
Now, are you talking about the futures priorities or the?
The fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three goals. I just had this up here as just context for what we've been working with. So it sounds like those fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three goals still resonate for this upcoming budget process. Is there any desire to add anything else to the list or we'll stick with those?
I think that's a good list.
All right. I think that is my final slide. So do y'all have any questions based on what we have covered today? Our, our last segment is to, for final, final comments, but just before I sit down, just wanted to see if there were any remaining questions.
I don't, anyone? All right, well, thank you. Well, I believe that brings us down to item number eight. Mine will be short, you guys take all the time you need or want. Thank you, Manager Kathy and staff for putting all this together. Financial end and a tax man, but good numbers, good thoughts, putting some things together for our consideration. I like what I hear from the financial end and the consult, debt consultant. It sounds as though we are running a tight ship there and finance is doing a good job. And I think the decision to go with a debt, debt consultant is beginning to shape up in the form that we really see the advantages of, of having that in place. It takes away part of the decision-making process in a sense, but it gives us progress otherwise. So we're moving forward, I think, in a good direction with them. We do have challenges. We don't have unlimited resources, so we have to sort of maintain our house, so to speak, and work within our revenues. I would certainly like to, to see an increased focus on grants and outside revenues. I think, I think outside the box there with, with all our separate departments and because there, there are many sources out there for grants and, and additional funding. I don't know what the current governor's, well, the final state budget is going to entail, but there are some changes coming there. Medicaid expansion is going to be one. I don't know how that's going to impact Person County. There's money there for broadband, but I think we need to approach some of those cautiously because if we get too far ahead of the curve with some things, if we have committed more money to, and well, I'll say broadband, that's a good one. If we've committed funding to that, it puts us beyond a threshold, then the state's not going to support. So we, we'll rely on our local representatives, Representative Jeffress and, and the new guy, what's his name, Craig?
Meyer.
Myers, yes, forget that. But, but anyway, overall, I feel good about today, what we have mentioned and talked about. And I think it's, it moves in the right direction and we're, we're making progress and we're going to keep, keep working toward that end. Commissioner Sims, comments?
Thank you. I just want to say, I, I think, I want to thank all the presenters that came out today to tell us what their needs are so that we now know and we can go back and see what we can and can't support. And, and again, I, we have a lot of, there's a lot of people that need a lot of things and there's a, there's a lot of money that's out there that people need. And I think we just, again, we'll have to work on that. That's going to be something very difficult for us to, to do as we go forward. And, you know, and I, I'm always concerned when we start talking about raising taxes and for our citizens and for the people in Person County. So that is a concern and as we go forward, we have to look at what we, what we can and can't do and, and then we, as commissioners, vote on that. Thank you.
Good. Commissioner Brady?
Just to echo that, thanks for the presenters, thanks for the staff for their hard work and diligent effort to give us all the information that we need to make these tough decisions going, going ahead. I've been through a lot of retreats. I've had some bad retreats with bad news. I've had some good retreats with good news and this is actually one of the good news. So thank you all. I think so, I think it's an effort from this board and the previous boards to, to, to get us to this point. So thank you again.
Commissioner Palmer? I'd like to commend all those who put this together. I think you helped us tremendously by your guidance and your leadership roles and your political figures and the facts that we most of the time don't know. I think it was a very productive meeting today and I think we're moving forward very well. Commissioner Thomas?
I just want to echo what everyone else has said. I actually enjoyed this today. It was my first one, it was a lot to take in, but it's very beneficial. I spent last Friday with the superintendent, just one-on-one going over the problems with our school system and the buildings, a lot of the buildings are older than I am. His list, their list is not a wish list. It's more, it needs to be done, so this stuff has to be done. Our kids are our future and I know this is a, a big-time decision we have to make and I think we all are, are here for our kids and we're going to do what's right for going forward with their, with our future. And our kids are our future, so, but I, I enjoyed today.
Didn't mean to go in reverse order. I don't know if Manager Kathy has further comments?
Just that I have appreciated the time that y'all have dedicated to this today and the discussion has been very helpful and a nice way to spend our morning together, just a thanks.
And who's home do we meet at for lunch? All right, do we have a motion?
Some do.
Have a motion adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you again.
Where do you stay with where you're at?